This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
Good evening. It's November 29, 2021. And pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted by remote means. Given that we have a quorum, the council present, I'm calling the November 29, 2021 Meeting of the Town Council Order at 6:32. I may have to come back and see if other councils have joined us, but I'm going to start with Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis. Please unmute.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
Darcy Dumont. Is not present at this point. Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanniki.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane. I know she's planning. Steve Schreiber.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
And Shalini Baummeln. Okay, so I know that Athena, you will keep an eye out for the three counselors who are presently absent. There is no chat for this meeting. If you have technical issues, please let us know. And I want to take this moment to mention that we were alerted by Amherst Media early today that they had been having technical difficulties all day. Right now, they seem to be operating fine, and we're monitoring that as we go along. However, the presence of Amherst Media is not a requirement for us to continue with the meeting. And I noticed Darcy Dumont has joined us, and please let us know. We can hear you and you can hear us.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other changes? No. Okay. Um. The, we have meetings coming up for the next three Mondays. One will start at 6:30. That's the state of the town addresses and the regular meeting. Counselor Orientation will be on December 13, and it will be open to the public because of the presence, potential presence of an existing quorum of the presently seated council. The regular meeting will be on December 13 at 7:30, and another meeting December 20 at 6:30. We have no hearings tonight, and so we're going to move on to general public comment. This is the only public comment this evening. So if you would like to make public comment, please raise your hands.
Counselor Shane has joined us. Can we confirm that she can hear us and we can hear her, please?
Yes. Kathy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Has anybody seen Shalini? No. Okay, so at this point, there's 12 of us and possibly Shalini being absent. Okay, I've asked for people to raise their hands. At this point, I see six hands. Are there any other people who would like to speak? There's 13 people with their hands up. I hope we will keep it at that. I'm going to go ahead and allow up to three minutes, but I would ask that if you hear people essentially making the same point, that perhaps you can refer to that and use it as a way to shorten your own comments. So we will begin with Barbara Pearson. Barbara, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. And you need to unmute when you enter. Thank you.
Yes, I think I've done so.
You have.
My name is Barbara Pearson. I live at 11 Page Street in District 3. I just want to register my surprise and dismay. The eight meetings, all of a sudden, that we have to meet, that the town has to meet every week, which I think is a burden on the counselors, the staff, and concerned citizens. And as far as we can see, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as we can see, the issues are issues that are dear to counselors that were not reelected, and at least in the two districts that are, that are most affected. The, this was probably the biggest, this was probably the biggest issue that led to their lack of reelection. And so it seems to us that we're living in some kind of Mayor Daley's Chicago where there's shenanigans to make sure that you can avoid having representative government. So I am disappointed. I don't agree with the things that are happening, and I feel bad for the council, the town, and for those of us who want to stay on top of things, that it's coming at a time when it's just really, it's just really inconvenient, and I don't know, and I don't understand why it's happening. I don't, I can't find, I can't think of a good reason why it's happening. That's all.
Thank you, Barbara. Harry Pelz, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
My name is Harry Pelz. I live in District 3 at 32 North Prospect Street in Amherst. I thank you for the opportunity to address the council, and I want to thank the people who have served on the council up to this time for their service. However, I'm concerned about this, what appears to be, as was stated earlier, many meetings which are a rush to judgment and not awaiting proper consideration and investigation of issues that are before the council. Counselors Ryan and Ross, originally, and this is my concern with the proposed down zoning of the piece of property that is opposite to a historical district. They presented a project to the community that initially was a three-story garage with one story to be underground and a representation that this particular location next to the CVS parking lot was a preferred one in a prior study several years ago. I believe that there's not been enough investigation and research into the difficulties of that location and alternative locations that may be better suited and be more in keeping with this town and with the village area. The three-story proposition that they began with, with one story underground, has now grown to four stories with additional height that would exceed 40 feet, possibly to as high as 50 feet. There does not seem to be any real planning study or parking study in connection with this particular location. Alternate locations, including expansion of the Boltwood Lot, which from a geographic standpoint is much more appropriate for this. The only access to the center from the-
Sorry, I'd like to make sure that you realize you only have about 27 minutes.
27 minutes? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I know, so I will, I will hurry. This, it's interesting that this lot is known as the North Pleasant Street Lot, but it always comes up now as the North Prospect Street Lot. There is no way into that lot from North Pleasant Street except a small alley.
I need to have you scrap up without one more sentence.
Oh, okay. I, I think the town will be losing $60,000 in yearly income from the existing one surface lot, and the cost of making changes to the surrounding streets and sidewalks will cost additional money. So I appreciate again this opportunity and wish you all a pleasant holiday season and look forward to seeing you when the new council comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to remind people to keep their comments to three minutes. I'm seeing people add their names and their hands. And if we can't keep it three minutes, I'll cut you back to two. It's the best I can do at this point. Janet McGowan. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Janet McGowan. I live at 706 Southeast Street and a member of the Planning Board. I'm going to try to be three minutes, but I think I might go to four, and I just ask-
Janet, I'm not going to allow it. I'm sorry. We just can't.
Okay, can we start at three then? Thank you.
Ready.
Dear town, dear town counselors, I'm speaking to you tonight to ask the council to please refrain from considering the four zoning amendments until the Planning Board has had time to read and agree to the contents of the four Planning Board reports. When the council receives a Planning Board report for consideration, it should be the Planning Board's opinion, and I think you would expect to be true. This past Wednesday on November 24, Planning Director Brestrop sent three Planning Board reports on three zoning amendments to Council President for tonight's packet. Of these three reports, the Planning Board had not even seen a draft of the 22-page rezoning of parcel 14A/33. The Planning Board did not have time to review and comment on the long draft report on mixed-use buildings that had been sent to the board just that, that Monday afternoon. The Planning Board had been sent a short draft report on Article 14 on Friday, November 19. So I do have a summary of the sequence of events. On November, on November 19, we got that report on Article 14, and I sent her a few edits on Saturday. It was in good shape. On November 22, Monday afternoon, we got a 13-page draft report on mixed-use buildings, asking for comments by noon on Tuesday, but I had been away. I was away on Monday. On Tuesday morning, I found this building draft in my inbox and told Chris, emailed her that I didn't have time to work on edits that day. She asked for edits by, I think, noon on Wednesday, a day when most people are actually busy getting ready for Thanksgiving or traveling. On Wednesday morning, I spent several hours editing the draft mixed-use building report, knowing I could not finish before Thanksgiving. The draft needed a lot of work to make the current bylaw and zoning changes clear to lay readers. I sent her an email saying I could not, I would not be done, and then starting, started getting ready for Thanksgiving. She emailed, emailed me back asking for edits by midday Monday. At this point, we had no draft on the rezoning of the parking garage overlay district. To me, at that time, it was clear that any schedule to get four Planning Board reports to the Town Council before Monday could not be met. Chris Brestrop's email confirmed this to me. I thought it was unreasonable and undoable ask the Planning Department staff and volunteer Planning Board to try to do this during Thanksgiving week. None of these amendments have a deadline except Article 14. None are on the Town Council's priority list from last winter. So I, on Wednesday, assumed the council would not receive any of these reports, except perhaps the short report on Article 14. So on Wednesday afternoon, I was getting-
Please wrap up.
Um, I, I can't actually. Um, I guess I want to say is that this is all very different from our usual practice of seeing draft reports, sending in edits, and then seeing a final report. Once before, when Town Council was sent a Planning Board report with that Planning Board review, Doug Marshall then asked the Planning Director to send us a draft first, and I said the same. Since then, drafts have always been sent to the Planning Board, and no final report has ever been sent directly to the Town Council without Planning Board edits and review. Um, I hope you find this situation as disturbing as I do. We're all independent, all volunteer board. This is a, it's a, it's a statutory task for us to send a Planning Board report to Town Council. This has not happened here. We hope you are not, one report was sent today that we had never seen. But, um, the Planning Board has never authorized Doug Marshall to approve a Planning Board report, and that's what's happened today. I think it's really important for the public and for the board itself to be supported and, you know, to know that the process is good and that the statutory requirements are met. And I think we can just make some time here for the Planning Board to take a time, look at these reports, and do it edits and presentations to the council, and I think that will help your-
Janet, you need to wrap up, please.
I think that will help your, your reflections and your, your debate. Thank you.
Again, I just want to remind people, three minutes, or I'm going to cut it to two. Bob Abrams. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live. Please go ahead.
Okay.
We can, but you're garbled. Go ahead.
Okay, the reason I'm garbled is because I'm contacting you from a remote location in Guatemala. And this is important enough for me to dial into this because I was concerned and upset about the way this was being rushed through before I heard previous two speakers. Now I'm even more disturbed about how this is being done, and, and I'm dismayed and shocked. I live on 62 North Prospect Street. This is my neighborhood. I've been there for 20 years. I've had a business there. I have rental units in my house, and that's the only way that I can afford to pay town taxes now that I'm retired because we have converted some of our living space into, into rental space. I've seen trucks come down our street, whether it's trash cleaning trucks or whether it's delivery trucks. I had a business on the street for 20 years, and I can tell you, I've had to go out on North Prospect Street and make nice to the drivers that are lined up behind large vehicles making deliveries because that's the only way. I mean, this, it, it's a very narrow street. To put all this traffic onto our street is just completely incompatible with the nature of neighborhood that, that we live in. Street cannot handle congestion, noise, traffic, all the things that a multi-story garage would fail. And I think, you know, the only, unless you're trying to accommodate parking for people who are now living in one of the newer downtown buildings that do not have sufficient parking, and they're going to be able to rent long-term spaces behind in this new CVS lot, that's the only way this makes sense where you've not permitted or required parking in downtown locations where they should have been included in the past. A garage on our street completely changes the neighbor, the nature of our neighborhood. Uh, we have a healthy mix of rentals and owner-occupied homes. Please leave it the way it is, and I cede my last 20 seconds to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Myra Ross, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. Myra, you need to unmute.
Do you hear me?
We can.
Oh, you do? Okay, I hit, okay, sorry. I'm Myra Ross. I live in District 4. I, I am hopeful that you will listen to the previous speakers. That's not why I'm here. I'm here about the issue having to do with the Pomeroy Village intersection that's on your agenda. I was told that I would not be able to speak during that, so I have to speak now. Really, I am speaking on behalf of the DAAC Disability Access Advisory Committee. I'm the chair of that committee, and I want to applaud some of the work that's been done so far in creating a plan to have accessible pedestrian signals, meaning audible signals that will help people know when to cross arly as well as visually. What the plan does not do, that we did ask them or them to do, is it does not include consultants that really do, are expert only in how to create safe intersections for blind people. They don't do anything else. That's what they do. And they are not in the plan for future, for future steps that is presented along with the materials that you got. And I think you need to require them to engage a consultant who knows about building accessible intersections, exactly where the curb cut should be, exactly how to get from the curb cut to the curb, exactly what angles things need to be at. That's a very precision kind of thing for blind people to cross streets. And I would hate to see you spend all this money and not do it right. And the DAAC sent you a very extensive memo on April 14, which in the last half hour I have resent to all of you. Um, and it's got a lot of steps in there and a lot of information in there about what's important, some of which was already taken care of, most of which needs to still be put into consideration. Um, and I'm hopeful that we will get some feedback. We don't get feedback from most of the things we ask for, so we don't really know what we've asked for that is being considered. Our experience is that some of what we ask for is not considered at all. So I guess that's the whole point. When you think about that intersection, please hire a, or ask them, or make them hire a consultant so that they do it right. That's all I have to say. Happy New Year, and thank you for your service.
Myra, thank you for your service to the town through, over many years now. Suzanne Musbratt, please. Enter the room, state your name, where you live.
Hello, Suzanne, I'm Musbratt, 38 North Prospect Street. I would like to say that I worry very much that in this rush to pass or to make decisions on a whole raft of amendments at extra meetings that have very stuffed agendas, you are causing a lot of shortcutting of procedures that are laid out in the Charter and should be followed. I am particularly troubled by what appears to be a lack of community impact assessments. And there are major community impacts of all of these amendments you're considering today. And I don't think proper care has been given to those or to the kind of cumulative effect of various amendments, pieces of amendments are being brought to you. And we don't really understand the, the way they work together. So I wish you would slow down and do a careful job of this. You're making a hash of it. The language in many of these amendments is sloppy, and it creates loopholes that people will be very sorry about in the future. And I'm also very sorry that this is happening at a time when members of the public are torn between obligations to their religious holidays and their families and their civic duties. We can't be in all places at once. And I really wish you would defer some of this until after the holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Susanna. Ginny Etheridge. Etheridge, I'm sorry. Please pronounce your name correctly and state where you live, Ginny.
Hi, thank you very much. It's Gina Etheridge. I'm in District 3. I live at 253 Lincoln Avenue. I have been a part of your community for just about two and a half years now. And one time I did call in and say how thrilled my husband and I were with Amherst. Um, I hail from Louisiana. I am still in Louisiana quite a bit, and I will tell you what Louisanians think of Massachusetts. Generally that it's cold. Everybody agrees on that. They're not too keen on your politics, but they will say that they feel that it's a place where things are generally done right. And they asked me why I would move to Amherst in particular. And I'll usually use certain adjectives like, well, the people there are enlightened, they're wise, they're thoughtful, they're prudent, and they're thrifty. I really like the thrifty part, too. But I think at looking at, at the actions, the most recent actions with things being pushed through, and I have been following Town Council meetings for the last couple of years, dialing in when I can, listening when I can, and following different forums, I almost feel like I'd have to take away four of those adjectives. The enlightened, wise, thoughtful, and prudent. Or I'll still use them, but have to say, but perhaps not in town politics, not in Town Council. So as a recent, I'd like to express my, my disappointment as a recent arrival. I don't have that long history that so many of you do, but it is disappointing for us who have made Amherst our new home. Thank you.
Gina, thank you for your comments. Ronnie Parker. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Ronnie Parker, 24 North Prospect Street. I think one of the reasons we need more than three minutes usually is that there are four amendments here. When you crowd the agenda, it's difficult to focus comments within the same time period that we usually expect for one amendment. So I'll focus on just the one thing today, and that's the parking garage on North Prospect Street. I have been complaining for some time about the lack of discussion of facts, and I tried to seek out some facts. So I would like to put forward some of the facts concerning the garage. The first one, the first piece of data I saw was at a Planning Board meeting. It was from the Town of Amherst showing that that particular lot is, has been used less and less every year since 2015. Then there's been references to this Nelson Nygaard report, which is really important. It's a very comprehensive report. I see it's not in your packet. If you haven't read it, again, I'm going to ask for you to postpone this, so I hope you'll look at it. Because the report actually says that Amherst has a surplus of 1,200 spaces at peak demand. So I don't know why there's a need for parking. So then this group was called back, it appears, a few years later, to develop a parking management plan for Amherst. And that plan never mentioned anything about any parking garage anywhere. So really, we don't know where this comes from, and there haven't been any studies since. When the proponents of this garage charged the city planning department with looking into it, they didn't say what a responsible, I believe, a responsible elected official who's planning to use our tax money should have said, which is, we need parking in Amherst, find the best place. Instead, they said, make this place work. So the first step was to change the zoning because this place, it was zoned residential. They tried to make it what's called light business, but that didn't work because the garage they wanted had to be so, so big. And then they converted it into this overlay thing, which means literally that you don't follow any rules. There is zero, zero setback on three of the four sites. So there is no need for this. And I would like to conclude by saying we really need a community impact assessment. I think that's a requirement. And quickly to address the procedure, I believe Massachusetts General Law says that there must be reports from the Planning Board, not the Planning Department of the Town Council. And when you say from the Planning Board, it means the Planning Board has seen it and approved it. So it is a violation of law to do what you're proposing to do. Thank you.
Ronnie, thank you for your comment. Kate Troost.
Hi, I live at 99 Dana Street in, I consider it a downtown neighborhood. And that's what I want to speak to. I really feel that the quality of downtown neighborhoods is an important part of Amherst. I've lived in a variety of places, in San Diego, and upstate New York, and New Jersey, and Boston. And, you know, I moved here very intentionally to a neighborhood where I could walk to downtown. And instead of living in a suburban location. And I think that a pedestrian-friendly and biker-friendly downtown makes, could re, moving towards that could really be a bonus for Amherst in so many ways, in reputation, in climate-friendly movement. And it isn't a very pedestrian or biker-friendly place. It's dangerous, actually, to be a biker in downtown. So I, so that's one thing. Number two, I want to speak for the concerns of the North Prospect Street neighborhood because I have been in a situation where I was very concerned about a zoning- A zoning, all of a sudden zoning change and a development going to take place in my neighborhood. And you know what? People from other neighborhoods did not come out. And I'm coming out for them because it bothers them. And they have our neighborhood and it's worth really thinking about. How to make this work so it's a win, 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 not just do it. There are specifics of the parking garage proposal. I'm not even going to go into them, but among other things, keeping a pedestrian friendly environment should be a part of that. Another thing is, because I live downtown. When I go downtown in a car, I have never had a problem finding parking. And that is because I know all the places you can park. I know you can park behind CVS. I know you can park behind Xana's. I know you can park behind where Hanyan's was in that coffee shop. I I know how to zip through that parking lot across through, across from the library. I I I know so many places to park, but I bet you a lot of people don't. So make, you know, signage, a parking map. I mean it. I know I know how to park, go to Johnny's. I know how to park to go to any other restaurant if I'm in a rush or if it's raining or it's snowing. I never ever have a problem.
Finish up.
Okay, so I think there's a perceived lack of parking. And also, if there is a parking garage constructed, I would like to know why extra money was invested in Boltwood. To enable the future stories to be added and that that's not being considered seriously at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to mention that we still have fourteen more people. But there are sixty nine people in the audience. So I'm going to again reinforce maximum three minutes, and if you can keep it less, thank you. Ira Brick, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
I am Ira Brick. I live at two fifty five Strong Street. There is a business guru named Jack Stack that wrote a book, The Great Game of Business, and he's considered the father of open book management. And he made a comment speaking to the Family Business Center that I ran, that if you have a good company. You will make a good product. And I want to say, a good government will make a good project. And I don't feel like we have a good project because of some of the lack of due diligence and oversight of this government. The proponents of a garage behind CVS have not made their case, as has been stated by others. There was a thorough study done. Most of the suggestions, including repainting for smaller sizes of cars and getting more spots in, have not been done at all. It's just surprising from. A community that is trying to get tax money and trying to balance revenues and expenses that you have not followed the. Recommendations in that study or looked at other locations seriously, as people were saying. Boltwood or next to Amherst Coffee, which seems like so much more visible and accessible. And regarding the mixed use and apartment buildings. What do we want downtown to be in a few years where even the president of the UMass system says that there's going to be a demographic cliff? Do we want our downtown to be basically, people say, don't call them dorms, but they are dorms. And one thirty percent of each building be commercial, but you can put it on a sky top. On a rooftop bar or spread it among buildings and things. There's just so little creativity and practicality. To make a downtown where people can actually go and use it to convene, to shop, to go to offices and so on. We can see where what is happening in Amherst has happened in numerous other college towns. I don't really hear you talking about. That you've seen those other towns and avoid some of the problems. It feels like there's an invasive species happening downtown. And there's ways to look at it. And there's also good examples of things that have happened in other towns. As far as pushing through at the end of the year, aside from that it is a holiday time, you're also transitioning. This is the first. Three year term of town council. This would be a good time to explore, have you succeeded? With your goals and switching from town meeting. There's a lot to learn here and you could take the few extra weeks to learn those things and to teach the new counselors from your experience. You could also take some time to do a deeper listening to the nine hundred or a thousand people that signed the petition. As opposed to the thirty people that signed the anti-moratorium petition. And I just want to say, I look forward to more transparency and more fair process with the new. Incoming five counselors, and I hope that it's going to be a new era. That's going to bring more innovation and effectiveness in Amherst. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ken Rosenthal, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Sunset Avenue, I'm in District Three. I would urge this council between now and the time the new council is elected to only consider and act on matters of great emergency. I know that the charter prescribes the date for the swearing in of the new counselor in January. But you only have to look to your own personal experience. When you were elected three years ago, you were sworn in twenty seven days after the election day. That would have been. If based on the election this year, the equivalent of tonight. If you could do it then, it can be done now. I think that the charter needs to be amended so that the new council can take. Its place soon after they are elected. To act now on matters that are not emergent, really disenfranchises the people who voted for the counselors and almost half. Of the people who will be on the council in January. So I look forward to having the new council seek to change the charter so that we can. Have a more reasonable date for councils to be sworn in subsequent to new elections. With regard to the garage that people have spoken about, I only want to add one thing. The question of whether a garage is appropriate there or not is not the question. The question should be, do we need parking and where should the garage be? You received a written statement from the recently appointed executive director of the Amherst Cinema saying she's in favor. Of the garage on North Prospect Street. Of course she would say that because she would like to have a garage or more parking for her nighttime visitors. But the right question to ask her is, where where would be the best place for the garage? And I'm speaking to you now as the former chair of the Board of the Amherst Cinema. And many years of experience with the cinema's concern with parking to tell you that. If the question were asked about the best place for that garage to support the cinema, it would be right next to the cinema. It can be done and I can tell you how if we had some time. And finally, I'd like to add one more thing. I would like you to look to Northampton to see how they run meetings like this. You tell us that there are sixty nine people here, but we can't see who they are. I can tell you this, I might have chosen not to speak at all if I knew who else was in this room ready to speak. I don't know who was going to come after me. I don't know what points they're going to be making. But if I could see them here, just the way I could if I was sitting in a room in town hall, I'd be able to know whether it's necessary for me to add my voice or to let other people speak for me. So please look to see if you can change your rules so that you can make all of us who are in the room with you by Zoom. Know who else is here and know and have an understanding of who of who we are. And I'll be yield my last twenty seconds and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ken. Priscilla White. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Priscilla White, Lincoln Ave. I will keep this brief because I agree with all of the comments that have been made so far. I'm very concerned about the rush on the zoning articles. The lack of of process. Of the needed edits and reviews of the issues on the amendments. And I do also concur, there is a lack of due diligence when the process is so flawed. I just know how zoning has momentous impact upon the town. Upon the people, the residents who live close to the center of town. And this rush seems to be denying. Many of us a fair and inclusive process. So my hope is that you will. Listen to the men, many people who have spoken so far. And consider delaying until January, until the new counselors are sworn in. To bait the final decisions about these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Priscilla. Anne Massey, please enter the room, state your name, where you live.
I think Anne put her hand down.
Okay, Kitty Axelson Berry, please enter the room and state your name and where you live.
Okay, I think I'm in now. Kitty. Kitty, thank you. Kitty Axelson Berry, I live in District Two, eighty nine Stony Hill Road. So I will try not to repeat things that have been said before. My, I, but I do have a couple of questions, of course. I, one of my questions is about. Procedure and overwork, specifically the overworked town hall staff. I was at the financial committee meeting the other day and I really became quite impressed with the many comments that you all made. About how, how difficult difficult it is for town staff to keep up with all the work that's coming in. With with these reports that they need to submit. And I'm sure they didn't mention it, but I'm sure that the open meeting law. Taking taking more minutes and catching up with that has caused a lot of extra work, but it's like. I'm wondering whether the town hall staffers are just being tasked with too much. They're being put in an impossible place. And essentially being forced to skip important procedural steps like getting approval from the planning board. For planning board reports and not just from one member. I have another question that isn't directly related to these amendments, and that is, I'm extremely curious about these. This destination Amherst plan, which is being mentioned over and over again just by a few people. As like the reason for the this parking lot and also as the reason for several other things happening around town that are maybe already in process. And I tried to find it on the town website. There's just like a fluffy little PowerPoint presentation that takes up a lot of pages, partly because they're repeats of each other. And they just have little, you know, bubbles that say, more robust town or, you know. More people in town, more businesses. It's just not really a a plan. So I I would love to see what I would love to see that real plan. And apparently it was made by the bid Gabrielle Gould and by the Chamber of Commerce, Claudia Pazmanee. And in one document, Paul Bachmann's name was on it. That was the only one that I saw. So many changes are being recommended as part of Destination Amherst. Okay, I have thirty five seconds, so I will not ask my final question. And thank you. Thank you very much for listening and thank you for going to all of these meetings. And considering the issues. That's all.
Kitty, thanks for your comment. Sharon Povinelli, please enter the room and state your name and where you live.
Am I entered?
Yes.
Great, Sharon Povinelli, District One, North Amherst. Also Sharon Povinelli, A.J. Hastings. Okay, I've got a lot. I'll go quickly. First of all, just. Telling the council, this is my opinion, telling the council not to do anything because some of you haven't been elected, reelected is like one political party saying. No, you can't appoint appoint somebody to the Supreme Court because your term is done. It's bogus. I was on the last town meeting. They put through, some people put through two articles that were non-emergency, in my opinion. And there didn't seem to be any problem with that. Okay, there's been two parking studies. And the Nelson Nygaard parking study, they they, when they said there was a surplus, that's because they counted private and public. Parking spaces as a surplus. Okay, let's see. The park, this article is not, you're not voting on a garage, you're voting to. Rezone something for the potential of a private company to come in and build a garage. Two, three, four, or five, whatever. Businesses need destination parking. You can talk to anybody. They're going to Northampton. They want to do some shopping. They head to the garage. If there's not a free, if there's a free space before that, they park there. Great, boom. But they know where to park from out of town. Everybody knows where to park from out of town. That's great that we all live here. We know all the nooks and crannies, blah, 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 blah. If we want people to come in here for entertainment, for dining, for shopping, for stuff on the common, we have to have a destination parking. The thirty years ago or more, that lot was taken from Barry Barry Roberts for parking. And then we decided for some reason to build a parking garage in the current location behind. Across from Johnny's Tavern. The lower level of that is unusable. And now it is not possible to build on additional levels that we were told were going to be possible. I have lived here thirty plus years. I commute on my bike regularly through town, home, through town, home. Let's see. I'm done.
Sharon, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
I just want to take one second and check on something. Okay, it was just a notice from Shalony Baum that her internet is not working. And there's not much we can do about it at this point because of the distance that she is out of the country. So Patrick Meager, M E A G H E R, please pronounce your name for us and tell us where you live.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Patrick Mayer, just District Three. I just wanted to. Sort of remind the everyone on this call of a few things that I think you know already. One is. Under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter forty one, Section seventy. Right, there's a requirement to create a planning board which shall make careful studies, right, of the resources, possibilities and needs of the town. Second, in the Amherst Home Rule Charter, Section nine point eight, what is a master plan? And what should we do with it? So the town council needs to make reasonable efforts to ensure. That the bylaws of the town, including but not limited to zoning bylaws, shall not be inconsistent with the master plan. This is the, yeah, and so now if we go to the master plan, Section nine, transportation and circulation. It's it's all about reducing dependency on on the automobile. And it says that there's already enough parking. And it says actively promote alternative modes of transport, and there's a vision laid out. Of, you know, bike friendly and pedestrian friendly streets. So. You know, I I'm not going to claim that there's the a a clear. I mean, I I think the there's a violation of at least the spirit of these processes that are laid out. I don't want to make too much of that, but it does feel like there is no basis for this, that it's being rushed, that people are not being heard. Also that it is inconsistent with the vision that was articulated in the master plan. You know, this Destination Amherst, adopting that would be a circumvention of the process. And, you know, people assure me that in five years or so, there will be self-driving cars anyway. So. You know, are are we doing something extremely backward looking? As far as knowing where to park, signage, I mean, what about informing people where the parking exists already? This was in the suggestions as a result of the two of the two studies that were done that have that have not been carried out. So let me leave it at that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and best of luck. That's it for me.
Patrick, thanks for joining us. Anne Straight. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live. You need to unmute, Anne. Okay, try it now. And you're you show you're unmuted. You might need to turn your sound up. Athena, anything else we can do?
We can come back.
We can come back to Anne.
Okay. Barbara Pearson, you still have your hand up and like to give other people a chance to speak. So I'm going to go on to Pam Rooney. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, Pam Rooney, District Four. Couple of issues, not necessarily on the zoning, but one of my concerns is having the timing of having material available. For those people in the public who do try to keep up with what is happening, as difficult as it is to track, you know, where any particular item is in the sequence, the timing of having material available is pretty crucial. So when something comes to your packet, the afternoon of the evening meeting, it is a disservice to you because you don't have time to read it, and the public certainly doesn't have time to find it and read it. The second item that I wanted to just briefly talk about is the process of, of these reports, and a number of people have mentioned it. Whether the planning department writes a report or a member of the planning board writes a report, what we're talking about is the fact that the board is, is not given the opportunity to actually see its material. It is in the name of the planning board that comes to you for consideration. I think it's a disservice to a volunteer board who spends lots of time and energy. I've heard people mention that they do, they're working on edits, and sometimes the edits don't matter because the report has already been deposited in your packet for the evening. So I think that is a, a bad precedent, and I think it is something that we all should take seriously. I'm going to address zoning just for a second. I have made quite a pitch that zoning needs to be discussed collectively. Zoning needs to be looked at holistically and cannot be done piecemeal. You have tonight the mixed-use building, which is all too similar to an apartment building in terms of its functionality because people have suggested that there only need to be thirty percent non-residential activity area on the ground floor. I think that is too little. I think there are opportunities for us in the future if we have more space to deal with. And let's see, and then just a very quick comment about parking in general. It's very, it's confusing to many people. We have a municipal parking district, but in fact, within that district, some places are not used. The Bertucci parking lot was not used for almost two years, and yet it is part of the municipal parking district. I'd like to look at that as well. Thank you.
Pam, thank you for staying within your time and for your comments. Anne Straight is up next again. Can we try it again? Anne, you need to unmute. Anne, can you unmute? All right, let's try. Let's bring her back again. Anne Scarf, I don't, I can't see the full name. Please state your name and where you live.
Hi, good evening. My name is Annie Scarf. I live at One Five One Amity Street, in the Marsh House condominiums, which we did District Three. The Quakers have a saying that when other people speak for you, you simply say, the friend speaks for me. So those who are counseling not rushing decisions on important issues where due process seems sketchy, and especially when many of the counselors in favor of the rush were voted out in November, I, I will be, I speak in support of that view. Thanks very much.
Annie, thank you for your comment. Janet Keller, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
My name is Janet Keller. I live on Pulpit Hill Road in North Amherst. I too agree with so many of the concerns raised this evening. And I will focus on the idea of planning before zoning, which has not occurred here. At least it hasn't been shared with the public, if the planning that's been going on, and starting from the site and the surrounding area that will be affected by it. And I see serious problems if the town parking lot were to be rezoned for a parking garage. It would be too big. It doesn't belong on such a small congested site that has restricted access and egress, and that is surrounded by narrow streets that are too small to handle more traffic and, and that are aligned with parking spaces that would likely be lost if the garage, if a garage were built. Moreover, it would dwarf, it would have a terrible impact on North Prospect Street. It would dwarf the seventeen-fifties area, Simon's Simeon Strong House, home of the Amherst Historical Museum. And it doesn't belong in a local historic district where it would undermine the North Pleasant Street Residential General R.G. Neighborhood, which is a mixed size and types of residential. I had hoped to be able to illustrate this with some, some photographs that I had put into a, along to illustrate each point. But when I went to submit it this afternoon, I found I would be limited to, Lynn, Lynn wrote to me and said I needed to put my comments in through the, the town website, and if there is a way for photos that illustrate what people are writing about, I wasn't able to find it in time to get it to you. So I urge you, I, I, I think those images are critical to, to show people what we're talking about. So I would urge you to, in addition to some of the other things that have been suggested, to open things up more to the public to make it possible to submit photographs. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Gabrielle Gould, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi. Am I, am I on?
We can hear you.
Hi, Gabrielle Gould, calling in representation of the Amherst Business Improvement District. Thank you all for tonight. Correct? We do not have a parking problem as of today coming out of a pandemic, correct? The Nelson Nygaard Easy Hanging Fruit has not yet been implemented, although it is my understanding that it is in process right now to be put into place, that signage and lighting and other things that people have mentioned. What I'd like to say is that a parking garage for downtown, a destination parking, is about the future. It's a minimum of three years down the line. And what we're looking at in the future is a beautifully expanded library whose Board of Trustees voted in support of this parking garage. We also have one, hopefully two, live performance venues coming that will bring hundreds of people a night to downtown Amherst to support and experience art and culture. We have six to eight new dining establishments coming downtown in the next year. We also have the concept of expanding incredible and beautiful outdoor dining with real parklets and permanent places, so it doesn't look like it's just been thrown up for a pandemic. And we have about two at least, if not four, new retail coming in. All of these places are going to be things that bring more people into downtown. So tonight, we may not have a parking problem downtown, but there is going to be one in the future, and we are supposed to be looking to the future. We are not supposed to be governing at the moment and today and only what we see and feel and have and experience today. I'd also like to say that I believe and put my faith into the town employees who are experts in their field and who were hired to do the planning and other things for this community in this town because we are not planners and we are not many things. We can only be experts in certain fields. And while I don't agree with them every time they make decisions, I do believe in what they are and who they are and their expertise. And I also believe that this council is following, following process and procedures. Again, just thinking of the future, if everybody can do so, the reason why the bid and the chamber's name comes up so many times in these meetings is because we are currently the economic development for Amherst. We are the ones bringing in businesses. We are the ones helping negotiate leases. We are the ones supporting them through the entire process of licensing with the town, and we are the ones then working with them to create their markets, getting in their business plans, and supporting them in their future to stay here. We are the ones who came forward with parts of Destination Amherst. One of the parts of Destination Amherst, though, is that incredibly beautiful well-used playground down at Kendrick Park. That is part of Destination Amherst. Look at the good parts of all of these things that we can bring together and look at what we could do if we all came together in a positive light and look towards the future. We are the voices of a small business, not a single owner, and not a single person on this call today owns a small business in downtown Amherst. We are their voice. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Bob, Pam? There you go, Bob. Go ahead.
You need to see my face as well?
No, we're, we're fine if you only want to let us hear your voice.
Thank you. Bob, Pam, Two Twenty-Nine Amity Street. I am a trustee of the library. I did not, in fact, vote for the, for the support of this library, the garage. But I'm not speaking tonight as, as a trustee. I'm actually speaking as a person who spent twenty or twenty-five years reviewing and writing contracts for New York City, acting on behalf of the controller of the city. And I'm looking at the way in which this has been done, and it concerns me, and it concerns me on a variety of levels. It may turn out that we need a garage, and I don't have real questions about that. I know that it would be helpful to the library. But logically, if you are going to do this planning, you start with the question of what is needed? How many spots do you need to add? And I don't know that we have actually done that as of this moment, nor have we actually considered how many spots we will lose and what are the trade-offs involved there. Then the second question one would ask is what are the locations that are available for doing this? And so far, what I have seen in all of the discussions have been we are only going to look at one spot, and that does not seem to me to be the way that planning should occur. And finally, there is the question of how do you then evaluate the various possibilities in terms of both costs and benefits? And again, I have not really seen anything other than a lot of, a garage would be helpful, so let's go and do it. And the question of its size and its location appear to have been predetermined. That is not the way in which we would have done it in New York City, frankly. That is more or less what would lead me in, in my old job to recommend voting against a project that was designed this way and probably recommend referring it to the law department. It sounds like it is designed for one bidder, and I don't like sole source contracts. I've never liked things that look like sole source contracts. So let's then go to the question of planning.
So Bob, I need you to look at the time. Okay?
All right. Well, with respect to planning, I am hoping that the planning board and the planning department will look to the longer-term needs of this, of the town and make it, make it work better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Bob. Anne, we're going to try you again. Anne Massey, please. Please enter the room and state your name. Yes.
Thank you. Anne Massey, and Thirty-two North Prospect Street. I will say that we moved here a little over a year ago, purchasing our property in the midst of the pandemic. And so we purchased the property site unseen, just through a virtual walkthrough. One of the reasons that we were particularly interested in moving to Amherst was because of what many people had said early, earlier about the nature of Amherst. In particular, one of the things was a commitment of Amherst to its historic districts. And the property that we purchased and the houses around it, a great deal of investment has been made with regard to those properties as part of an historic district. So it's quite surprising to me to think that there's really any discussion of building a multi-level parking garage on a residential street of which has been designated historic district. I'm quite surprised. As someone said earlier, I'm, I'm perhaps not as enthusiastic about Amherst as a progressive community. One of the things also with regard to thinking about being progressive, and I encourage the council to look to research that's been done on urban planning, including work by Pew Research on how parking garages may be headed for extinction. And so thinking about, you know, what's the, what is, what are we doing and why are we doing it? There appears to me to be no current evidence of parking needs, and I will give to some of the other speakers that, you know, perhaps there's a need, perhaps we're not seeing it. But, but everything that I've seen with regard to the lot in question is that lot is empty most of the time. And I walk through that lot all sorts of times during the day, every day of the week. There is no current need or certainly any current use with regard to that CVS lot. Now, if there has been a need being created because zoning has allowed buildings such as Kendrick and the other place that is under construction right now to go forward that have no parking plans, where you have fifty-eight apartments over on, I think, is it Strong Street? I, I'm still new to the area, so I'm still learning the names of the streets with no parking provision, and you are creating a parking problem. That's a different story. So is this parking lot that you're going to build, not for the people that, you know, are just coming into town to shop or eat or whatever, but because now you've got to solve a problem that has been created? That's a different thing. That's a different thing that we, we as taxpaying citizens need to consider. So I really encourage, I, I really do feel that this is now currently a rushed process that is post-election, that I think we need to step back. And if there's a parking need, I am not anti-development. I'm very pro-development, but let's do it right, and let's really be the progressive community that many, many people have come to Amherst to, to enjoy. So thank you all very much.
Anne, thank you for your comments. Meg Gage, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all the hard work. This is really hard. I want to, I'm sorry, Meg Gage. I live in North Amherst at Two Oh Eight Montague Road, District One. I want on a different subject somewhat to remind everyone, three years ago, when the council first came, was inaugurated, I made on behalf of a large group of others a proposal for an advisory committee that would be appointed by the council. Sad to think about that group that put that idea together, as two or three of them aren't with us anymore, Maureen Adams and Jackie Medina and the Foxes as well. The idea that we proposed was that the council set up a committee that it would control, it would appoint, that could do research on topics that were complicated and needed more input, in which were too much to ask the town staff to do. Amherst is full of smart researchers and full of people who wanted Amherst is full of smart researchers and full of people who wanted act in service to the town. And I'm going to bring this up again when the new council is inaugurated. And uh, just want to give a couple of examples of how this could have been helpful. For example, it might have been helpful to look at how other college towns generate taxes when they have to manage a lot of student housing. And uh, and the kinds of complex, I don't want to take too much of your time, the kinds of complex issues that we're facing. Another example would be researching different communities' solar bylaws. What makes a good solar bylaw and what doesn't? And I think uh, I could give some more controversial examples of things where it might have been helpful. The idea of the advisory committee is that you can ignore the advice if you want to, uh, but it can be a group of people you appoint who can help you get answers to things. I'll just notice now with this controversy around parking, people are saying different things. There are some people who don't think we need parking and others who think we may need parking, but this isn't necessarily the right place for it. This is an example of where there could be input from people in the community that could help clarify. Those are really two totally different um, topics. I think as much as anyone, I want downtown Amherst to be an arts destination. And if it's successful, as uh, Gabrielle has described, which I hope it is, we may well need parking. The question is, where should it be? And this is a something that could, you know, there are answers to that. Anyway, I'm going to bring this up again when the new council comes in and hope it will be uh, considered. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Jennifer Taub, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Jennifer Taub, um, I live at two fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue. And um, I would like to specifically um, speak with respect to the rezoning of parcel thirty-three on North Prospect Street, uh, the parking structure. So I hope you indulge me, because I know there's been a lot of comments about this. But when the sponsors of the parking structure initially proposed rezoning the parcels, the parcel from RG, General Residence, to BG, uh, General Business, the neighborhood expressed concern that once rezoned, even if it was ultimately determined that a parking structure could not be built there, then any five-story building could be constructed there. So the sponsors came back with a proposal for a parking facility overlay district instead of permanent rezoning. Initially, many of us were encouraged by the overlay district option. However, the devil being in the details, it soon became clear that an overlay district is not subject to the dimensional requirements of any other zoning district. So what we now have with the current proposed parking facility overlay district is permissional permissible lot coverage that supersedes even that allowed in the general um, business district with the BG's uh, generous dimensional allowances. With the proposal currently before the council, we could have on a residential street in a general residence neighborhood a building with ninety-five percent lot coverage with zero rear and side setbacks, which will contain four, not the originally promised three parking levels, and with equipment and stairwells that rise even higher. The neighbors were receptive to rezoning this uh, parcel thirty-three from General Residence to BL or Business Limited, because we saw the Limited Business District as a transition zone between RG and BL. But we were told that for the purpose of a parking structure, the parcel could not be rezoned from General Residence to Limited Business, because the lot coverage required for a parking garage exceeds the permissional permissible lot coverage in the Limited Business District, which I guess is exactly the point that municipal parking garages do not belong on residential streets or even in transition zones between RG and BG districts. And it's for this reason that Amherst initially determined that the dimensional requirements in the limited business districts would not allow for municipal parking garages, since both residential and transition districts are not appropriate for locations for those kinds of facilities. So I would ask that we respect the values, um, if you will, of the original framers of Amherst zoning bylaws and that parking garages should not be permitted on residential streets in residential neighborhoods. You know, or even, you know, in a transition zone between a residential and general business, that if a parking garage would go there, it should be the dimensions that are appropriate for the Business Limited District and not, again, an overlay district which can supersede all the dimensional requirements of any other zoning district in Amherst. And I would also add um, that my husband is I just want to say that um, for the Drake, uh, I'm a big supporter of the Drake. I can't wait till it opens, but it's really probably not appropriate to have revelers leaving a music venue after midnight and going back to their cars on a residential street. Thank you.
Uh, Bob Abrams, you've already spoken, so I'm going to go on to um, Gabor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gabor um, Lukach from District Ten, forty-four Beston Street. I would like to talk to the long-term effect of what's happening here in town. Um, one of them is I have seen, I'm a full-time biker. I don't have a car, so my opinion might be skewed about this issue. But one of the things I have witnessed is that we are sliding behind other towns in our bicycle facilities. There are just some bike facilities on the side of the road. People are afraid of biking. I find myself in danger many times. So instead of inviting more cars, I would like to propose the idea for sustainability to invite more bikes, to have that emphasized instead of car driving. I agree with um, Ms. Gold, that um, if we invite parkers, you know, cars and make it easy for them, they might come more than if they make it hard. So this is a project to make in the future sometimes um, parking easier. That's also not going towards sustainability, in my opinion. Another long-term effect is there has been a lot of inconsistencies in this project. As other people pointed it out, I'm not going to go through. And those inconsistencies definitely show that there is an entity in town who really wants that project. I understand it. It would be really convenient, because that lot may be soon and needing to be resurfaced anyway. So instead of spending the money on the resurfacing, we could just build this big parking garage and end up with more parking. But another side to that is if you push ahead with an agenda that so many people disagree with and that is disagreeing with also the other goers of town, like the sustainability, and disagreeing with the general opinion, the law, everything, just to push it through the last moment. What happened in Hungary, things have been like that politically in Hungary. What happened there is people started to sabotage the process. Sabotaged by not and not attending supporting entities like the local businesses. Sabotaged by trying to do the wrong thing, regardless of whether they benefited or not from it. That's a real danger if we just push for things because we want that. And the library project actually was a little bit of example where there was definitely some kind of intention in reviewing the votes.
Gabor. We need you to clip finish up, please.
Sorry?
I need you to finish.
Yes, thank you.
Jay Silverstein. Please unmute, state your name and where you live.
Hi, Jay Silverstein, thirty-two North Prospect Street, Amherst. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. What what what? I I feel like we're being hoodwinked uh, by by the town council a- and the planning board, because the references that were promoting uh, the garage overlay were compared to Boston, Massachusetts, Springfield, Massachusetts, and Greenfield, Massachusetts. And they're all in commercial areas and not a historic residential area. And in Amherst, there were other two, uh, there are other uh, possible locations for the garage on Amity Street and Bowwood Walk, which also are in commercial areas and then non-residential and again, historic areas. So I I I just feel that uh, the 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 town council and the planning board were not honest with us. They're giving us uh, apples when we're looking for oranges. And I'd just like to say that um, so far, there have been discounting tonight, but there have been eleven pro-garage people at which were all business people, and they only came to one meeting, and that was on September ninth. As it happens, uh, there are twelve people, twelve from about seven uh, from District Three and eight residents from outside District Three, which are all against the garage. So that makes twenty-seven people came out against the garage and only eleven for the garage. Uh, so therefore, sixty percent of the people want the garage and um, it it also makes me feel like the town, there's there's no difference in the in the uh, town real estate tax between business and residents. So I don't know why uh, you feel like uh, or or at least in my case, I feel like the business people are treated more favorable than residents, especially uh, since the two um, uh, cat town councillors who proposed this bill lost in their reelection bid. So I I I just think that maybe uh, we 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 should uh, propose to have cooler heads prevail and we do not uh, and and not take any action until uh, the new town council in January. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good to call in one more person that has their hand raised, who has not spoken. And that's going to be the end of public comment. It we've now been at this for almost an hour and a half. Karen Winter. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Karen Winter. I live at fourteen Elm Street, District Four. Yeah, I'm I believe in supporting business. I think it's very important that we have a vital downtown, and I recognize that the councillor's aim is is to help finalize the town. I applaud that. My uh, feeling is that we have so few of these pieces of land which could be, which have to be used to make downtown a destination we we want to go to. And I believe we're more likely to find a need to go downtown if we use that particular piece of land as, I don't know, we should put it out there and get a lot of ideas, but a a place where there can be a multitude of little shops. Businesses are going to be helped more if there are more businesses next to them attracting people. And yes, we do need parking, but parking doesn't have to be on those central areas, especially since parking, who knows what's going to happen in the future? If there are hundreds of hundreds of people, as I hope, coming to the Drake, we'll have to organize some way to get them there, maybe outside parking with the shuttle. But that piece of land is too valuable and is in a kind of an awkward position to uh, let it go as a parking garage, in my opinion. So I I realize what you you're trying to do to help the town, and I I see the need. But I must say, I do think that all parking should be delegated to less desirable, more uh, traffic-friendly areas of town. And if town becomes thriving and people go there, we'll be able to do that. We'll have an outside parking lot somewhere that can be found where a parking garage could be built, I believe. So thank you for your time.
Thank all of you for the public comments you've made tonight. There are sixty-eight people in the audience as well as the people in the panel. Uh, we are going to move on. There is no consent agenda. There are no resolutions or proclamations, and we are going to go on to um, the Pomeroy Village intersection. This is a twenty-five percent design update. Guilford Mooreing, please proceed. You need to turn your sound up or something.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So we we haven't really taken, as 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 people have asked, we didn't really take this to the DACC or to the the TAC at this moment, because we really are trying to get the alignment down to um, take as least amount of property we can from the affected property owners, and um, that's what we've been working on right now. So as you look at the plan now, the big things we have done is that we have we have um, reduced the parking in this. I think if you can put the hand over the little red circle. So this is the Slowbody Building with Carriage Shops, not Carriage Shops. This is the Slowbody Building. And we originally were going to take three spaces from this property. We're down to one space, really. It says two here, but we're really at one. Um, there's enough room at the ends of the both these parking areas to actually give you to put that one space in. So we think we have met that gentleman's concern there. Um, I know he's in the audience, so he can probably talk about it. We're taking a very small sliver of the Hess gas station. Um, and we met with them today, and they're actually pretty excited about it. They they want to have a sidewalk in front of their business. That's probably the one thing they were, they uh, they really liked the idea of having a sidewalk to tie them in with the rest of the village. And then the other Slowbody property that's owned in the right, lower right corner. Um, we're still not in their parking lot. We're well outside their parking lot, and we're outside their storm drainage basin. Um, they have some concerns about storm drainage, but if we need to, we can take that storm drainage and tie it into the town system as we work this process. And then on the Mission Cantina side, which is the lower left, we're basically, if we push the sidewalk away from the road, we will mirror their parking lot with a sidewalk on the on the on their parking lot behind, on the grass next to their parking lot. And then we'll leave a grass belt between the sidewalk and the road. We've really been trying to do that, because if we put the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks, no matter how we lay out the crosswalks, we need to have some space for them so they can be seen, and we prefer to have them on the roadside of the sidewalk, not on the backside of the sidewalk. We have a couple of places where they may be in the sidewalk, because the sidewalk's so wide, but we've worked really hard to keep the to keep it so that there is a little grass belt for that signage and for those lights. So the goal today is just to show you where we've come with the property owners. Uh, we do still need to do a couple of things uh, with the alignment. And hopefully, the property owners are in agreement, or the other property owners are in agreement with this, and the council is in agreement with this. It does show that there's not much room along this public way to to have a lot going on inside the have a lot going on for crosswalks, um, like this island will have to it's going to be hard to make a uh, offset crosswalk in here, as some people were talking about. But it could possibly be done. Um, and that's where we are right now. So we just wanted to talk to you about this. We've got it down to only one telephone, one power pole that needs to be moved. That's the pole that's in the magenta. That pole needs to be moved, and it can be moved anywhere along West Pomeroy, because it's really just a span pole which connects from the West Pomeroy line to the West Street line. There is no really hard connection with um, there's really no hard connection except running diagonally across the intersection, which is easy enough to move out of the way. So that's where we are. Um, just want to take some comments, see what you think. See if there's any other questions that come up, see if we're heading the right direction, if we're not heading the right direction, um, stuff like that.
The floor is open for councillor questions, comments. Darcy, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to check in Guilford about Myra Ross's public comment and whether this is the time at the 25% mark that you wouldn't, you would also check in with the Disability Access Advisory Committee or hire a consultant or whatever she was suggesting.
Not yet. We, we still need to finalize the layout a little more. If, if people object to this layout and then, then we're, we have to adjust it some more and kind of get it in there. That's what we need to do next.
So are those things so connected? Is the layout something that would be connected to getting advice about layout?
The property owners, one of the property owners was concerned about the amount of land we were taking to begin with. So we've been working on consolidating our take and reducing it down. Yes, there's going to be an impact on disabilities and there's going to be an impact on other people with the intersection if we reduce farther than we are now. But if this, this kind of layout and this doesn't really fly well, then I really don't know what we're going to do, but we'll have to, there'll have to be a lot of give from everybody.
I just want to mention before I recognize the town manager, we are not voting on this tonight. It's merely an update. Paul? Please unmute.
I want to mention that we are at the 25% stage and this is to get the overall layout. And so we, and this is what the work has been done since the town had looked at this previously. The next time we bring it back to you, we'll be at the 75% design. And that that's in this time between 25 and 75 is when we get into the, the laying out the lines and doing all the work that we would review with the DAAC or whoever else needs. And this is when we start talking about where we're placing the beacons and all those types of things. So there will be another time for the council to come back to this.
Thank you, Paul. Kathy Shane?
Hi, Guilford. On the map, when I was looking at it earlier today, I was trying to figure out how I would enter the various shopping areas that exist around there. So there's Mission Cantina, there's the various spaces. And is there always an entrance, a reasonable distance before you get to the roundabout? So that you're not, you know, crossing over on traffic? And the reason I'm asking is because I think of roundabouts, except in cities in Australia like Melbourne, is roundabouts are often not in an area that has lots of stores all around it. They're more like the one up by UMass, you know, that are helping cars move on through. They're not on their way to turn into a shop. So I was looking at where would you go for Mission Cantina, where the gas station is, where the little stores are, where the, the hair. So I was trying to figure out where and how you get into those places. That was my question.
Okay, that's easy. If you look at the drawing you see on the screen, the dark blue is the new layout. So the dark blue, double dark blue line is the curb, will be the new curb line for the outside of the road. And you can see it intersects the red lines, which are the existing conditions. So at Mission Cantina in the left, lower left, the entrance stays the same. It actually gets wider here. It's about, it's about six, about four or five feet wider there than it is now. When you go across the street to going into the Slowbody shop, Slowbody property, the entrance is exactly in the same spot. It doesn't change. When you go diagonally to the lower right, when you go into the little strip area, which has the daycare and the monastery school, I think it is, it's monastery school. That entrance stays the same. And then the Hess station, they're, they're the only ones that have a change. They lose the, if you're looking, it's up at the upper left, upper right. They lose the first entrance into the gas station. That little slip, the slip in goes away. So you can't slip out and you can't slip in. And but then farther to the north, their intersect, their entrance gets wider and more defined with another island. So you have an entrance and you have an exit. So they actually gained some space in here and more definition. And then for the Slowbody property on the left side, again, the, at the top, their entrance at the farther north stays exactly the same place too. So there's really only one entrance that's going away or being changed significantly in a negative way. And that's this closing of the little slip. It's down where the islands are.
Yep.
So that when you're in the roundabout, you'll have to go up and go in farther up at the property line. You won't be able to slip in. And if you're in the gas station, you won't be able to slip out because we didn't want vehicles going the opposite direction in the wrong lane. So that's the only, that's the only change to entrances we've made for all the properties.
Thank you.
And just, just, just to say on that, the grant, the town money pays for all that realignment? So it's not on the property owners?
Correct. The project will pay for all this realignment and tying into their existing. And then if we have to make accommodations for lost, lost parking space, then I guess we'll, we'll be paying for that as well.
Thank you.
Alyssa?
So just a little following up on what we heard earlier. It's really great that we've worked with the property owners. I know some concerns were, were mentioned previously as we worked this through TSO and at Town Council previously. But I want to make sure it's clear that despite what Guilford said, we wouldn't be hearing from a property owner at this point in the meeting because the time for public comment is over. Secondly, I don't want to hear later that the push-pull that we described, which I understand is complex between the needs that the Disability Access Advisory Committee has expressed and the needs of the property owners is really difficult to navigate, given all the limitations in that area. But I want to ensure that what I'm not hearing at the 75% level is, well, you know, it's just not going to work out to do the things that they asked for. And we, we need to be clearer managing expectations through this whole process. So if it turns out that not accommodating certain things DAAC has asked for, but accommodating other things they've asked for, let's assume we'll be able to accommodate some of them as we already have. I just don't want to hear about it after the fact, well, we already made the decision and now it's too late. So I think we just need to make sure DAAC understands where we're at. Because as they've indicated, they feel some frustration and I totally get that you didn't take it to them yet because you brought it to us tonight. But I hope that they'll be seeing it and again, understanding where realistically the things that they want fit into the process and what those decision points are. And along those lines, Lynn mentioned earlier that we're not voting tonight. And I just want to clarify for everyone that it's my understanding, we're never voting on this again. We voted on this already. We're not voting now. We're not voting at the 75% part. We're not voting when somebody brings it back to public comment. We already voted. I insisted when we did that, that we see that 70, 25 and 75% designs. There are communities where you would just vote it and never see it again until it was done. But I knew based on all the concerns raised that we wanted to see this and I'm glad the town council agreed to that. And I appreciate Guilford bringing it back to us. But I just want everyone to understand, just as I want to manage DAAC's expectations, I want to be clear. We're not going to be changing this design in terms of our vote. It's just all the particulars that Guilford's having to work out to accommodate all the needs we've expressed.
Thank you for that clarification, Alyssa. Dorothy, it's, please come in.
Yes. Thank you, Guilford, because when I first saw this, I could not make head nor tail out of it. You did explain things very interestingly, but of course, it's a comfort to me to know that we aren't going to vote again because there's really no way that I, as a town councillor, would say, oh yeah, that really is the best and only way to do it. So my question is reflecting my concern about disabled people and blind people trying to navigate in a small, this is a small community area, a new roundabout. Who sees this next? What is the rest of the process? Thank you.
So we do have a consultant who's working on the alignment issue and checking the alignment issue. And then once we're, we're more firm on that, then we can start taking this back out to the DAC and to the TAC and letting them look at it one more time and see if they have any comments. That's kind of the, the next, the next step. So, and hopefully the property owners are seeing it now. Hopefully, I haven't gotten in touch with Mr. Wang. He's the only one I haven't talked to, but representatives for Mr. Slowbody's properties have been talked to. And like I said, I've talked to the Hess station today. And like I said, they're just excited to have a sidewalk.
Are there any other councillor comments or questions? Dorothy, please lower your hand. I just want to mention to the person in the attendees that we are not doing public comment on this. If you would like to make sure we know what you'd like to say, please email us at towncouncil@amherstma.gov and make sure that you include Guilford in that email. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to go on and try to finish up the public way before we take a break. So I've talked with councillor Ross prior to tonight. And he, as he comments on town services and outreach, he's also going to integrate into that comment his, the whole issue of the criteria that TSO has been using with regard to parking. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call on Superintendent Guilford Moore again and have him make, talk about this parking recommendation.
So we're talking about Kendrick, the Kendrick Place parking.
I'm sorry, Kendrick Place, yes.
All right. So can you bring up the map, Athena, the drawing? Thank you. So this is the existing conditions on Kendrick Place right now. You can, we've actually put in 20 foot by 10 foot, 20 foot by nine foot parking spaces everywhere you could fit one in. So right now, that's how people are parking. They're, they can park and then actually people are making space, their own spaces that are more than this as well. But legally, this would be the number of spaces we actually marked it out. So then we looked at the guidelines that we were coming up with and we looked at how wide the road is. And we determined that really you cannot have two travel lanes and two rows of parking on the, on the road right now. You need to have just parking on one side and then you have enough room for a two-way traffic on the other side. So what we're proposing is that we keep the parking on the west side. So spaces, the spaces one through 22 will stay. And then the spaces one through 13 on the east side will be no parking. And that is to allow for the movement of two vehicles past each other if one person's parked on the, on the west side.
Okay. Evan, would you like to come, provide us with TSO's report and how you looked at this?
Yeah. So TSO looked at this a few different times, including holding the required public hearing on October 21st. And this was our second application of our Town Services and Outreach Committee review criteria for evaluating residential parking requests. And both of these items are on the agenda tonight. For discussion, the Kendrick Place parking regulations are up for a vote as well. And we wanted to depair them so that the council could discuss the TSO's decision in the context of the criteria that we adopted. And so these have been already applied once with Lincoln Ave. And this is the second application of them. And we also, in our most recent meeting, did do a little bit of revision to them to add an additional criteria. So TSO looked at this. We had a public hearing. We heard from multiple residents of the street. And there was unanimous support from the residents who commented for removing parking on one side of the street. All of them citing the inability of larger vehicles to access the street when there's parking on both sides, especially waste haulers. So when we're looking at the review criteria that we use as TSO that you all have in your packet as part of the TSO report, the three main criteria that we look at are roadway classification, available pavement width and traffic flow data. This is classified as a residential roadway, which are roadways in local neighborhoods that don't see major traffic, transit buses or heavy truck traffic. And according to the TSO criteria, for there to be two-way traffic on a local roadway, you need 16 to 20 feet and then you'd need an additional seven feet for a parking lane. So Kendrick Place is 21 feet, which means that it, it's just barely at that two-way traffic. It's not wide enough to have technically by that criteria parking on either side. However, we also know that it has very low traffic flow. It's a pretty small street. It's a dead end street. And so it doesn't see a high volume of traffic. And so that gives us a little bit of flexibility to look at other considerations. And those are all outlined in the TSO report, which include closeness to downtown or village centers, accident history when available or requested by the TSO, public safety, which includes access for Amherst Fire Department trucks, observed parking demand, resident input, availability of off-street parking, interface with bike and pedestrian network plan, adequate sightlines at driveways, cross streets, crosswalks and bus stops, presence or absence of sidewalks, reported proximity of populations with higher traffic safety issues, possible impacts on the town's parking permit system and possible impacts to adjacent streets. And so because it is a low traffic street, those additional considerations are weighed heavily when we're making our decision. And you have in your TSO report commentary for each of those bullets regarding the TSO discussion. At the end of this conversation, TSO unanimously recommended with one absent to adopt the parking regulation changes that Guilford just described and that were proposed by the town. You also note in your report that the town also offered the possibility of essentially removing parking on both sides of the street. That was not supported by any of the residents who gave public comment. Those who spoke to that possibility all spoke against it. They spoke to removing parking on one side of the street. TSO, through its process, also reached out to the Transportation Advisory Committee to ask for their input. They gave us a very detailed memo, which is also in the town council packet tonight. They supported the Department of Public Works' recommendation to remove parking on the east side, but also supported maintaining parking on that one side of the street. So at this point, I'm happy to answer questions from the council on either the parking criteria implemented by TSO or the recommendation by TSO to change parking regulations on Kendrick Place.
Thank you, Evan. And also Guilford, thank you for the work of DPW. Dorothy?
Well, first, Evan, I have read emails with interest from people in Kendrick Place about the inability of resource recovery trucks and trash trucks to even get down there and actually turning around and refusing to pick up things. So it's, it's quite clear that there's a problem on that street. And I have absolutely, you know, agree with you in your recommendation on Kendrick Place. But you did say that the criteria that TSO developed had been used once and I, I was at that meeting. And it was applied to Lincoln Avenue and my memory is that it in fact met all the criteria, although the vote did not reflect that. So the, see, to me, the criteria is fine. The application in terms of Lincoln Avenue was flawed, but I have no problem with your criteria. So that's my positive comment on your criteria and on your recommendation for Kendrick Place. But my unhappiness, of course, that Lincoln Avenue did not get voted the right way.
Kathy?
I have just a really minor question as I stare at this map. For the parking that will remain, and I can't see some of it under the words Kendrick Place, but it seems to go from seven up to 11. So there must be three in there. Does each of those spaces, does it leave enough room to get in and out of the driveway? So like number 14, looks like it's right on the edge of someone's driveway. So it's sort of a question of, of the spaces that remain, since it's such a narrow street. Getting in and out of a driveway, a truck going, so that's all I'm asking is on spacing. So, and then similarly, the 30 feet from the intersection, I know we've seen that before and Guilford has recommended that. On such a narrow street, if there's a car parked at number one, two and three, does that ease, does that leave enough room for a big truck to get in? You know, and I'm partly asking because I'm watching what happens up here in North Amherst. Some big trucks have to take a, a really wide angle turn to get into a place. And if there's anything along the edge, they can't get into the street, you know, on some of our narrow, so like the buses. If there's, so it's purely on that, is 30 feet enough? If there's, so it's purely on that, is thirty feet enough? And do we definitely have enough wherever these little gray places are and it's someone's driveways?
Guilford? Please unmute.
Sorry. Yes, we do have enough space for the driveways. That being said, when we mark this out as parking, we're not going to mark each individual space. So someone could block a driveway because they think they can fit, and then resident would have to call the police and have them ticketed, possibly towed. That's kind of how it's set up. For the thirty-foot entrance, yes, thirty feet is large enough for most WB, we'll call it WDB fifty, it's a fifty-foot long truck or a bus that's fifty-foot long, they can make that turn easily in and out without having to swing too wide one way or the other. The driver may still swing wide just to give himself some room, but theoretically, it all lines up so you can make it in and out without going through a parking space or going off into the grass.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Schreiber?
Yeah, so thank you for this. And just, I'm going to support the recommendation, but I do have a question. So are we setting precedent where every roadway that is residential and twenty-one feet, or whatever the range was, you said twenty-one feet to? I have been in trouble with the math. That those roadways then all become parking on one side only? Because there are lots of roads that, that fit those criteria. And actually, most of them aren't marked at all. So I'm just curious if there's some other criteria that will be used or what process will be used for all the other twenty-one-foot roadways? You know, neighbors to have the same consideration.
Um, Steve, I'm going to direct that to Evan in terms of your recommendation for future TSO action.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a good question. So where it comes down to is on, in the criteria that TSO has that on, under Section Three Basic Guidance Number Four, collector roadways and residential roadways with moderate or low traffic flow shall employ the criteria listed below in order to determine appropriate parking, which is the criteria that I read aloud. And the idea behind that is that just because a street is fairly narrow and has parking on both sides doesn't necessarily mean that it needs parking regulation, unless there's an identified problem. And that's where those, those additional considerations come in. So for Kendrick Place, the first bullet is closeness to downtown or village centers. Kendrick Place is really close to downtown. It's adjacent to a street that's within the downtown parking permit. And so we heard from residents, and as someone who used to live on Kendrick Place, I can also attest to this, that when there are downtown events, it's often used as a public parking location. We heard, we have observed parking demand as one of those bullets. And so we heard and we saw that there are a lot of people who do park on Kendrick Place. And so it's the combination of those bullets that I think come to make a decision. Because, you know, I'm thinking about my street, Spalding Street, we have parking that's allowed on both sides. It's probably as narrow as Kendrick Place. But there isn't a lot of parking demand on it. We're not close to downtown, really. There isn't, it's not convenient to any type of event or venue. And so I, I wouldn't say there was a parking problem on this street. And so I think the process here is when we hear that there's an identified problem, then we evaluate it, and those additional considerations come into play here. So I don't think that we're setting a precedent that any street that's twenty-one feet wide and has parking on both sides needs to have parking removed. Because I think if we applied this criteria to many streets in town, we'd find that there isn't much of a problem. But with Kendrick Place, we did find that there was one.
Okay. I do have a question, and it's really of Guilford. And it's based on the fact that we've had at least one resident regularly have to complain because the trash haulers could not pick up trash. And it's become a concern, if not a health hazard. And so my question is, how soon can you get the signs up if we approve this?
That's, that's a good one. So we always have to call Dig Safe. It's a five-day business, five-miss-a-day window. We have to wait when we mark out something. So if you approve it tonight, we would call in a Dig Safe tomorrow. And then probably Tuesday, Wednesday next week, everything being in the shop, we'd be able to install the signs.
Thank you. And I, I am sure the resident that has been in touch with us will be glad to hear that. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Then I'm going to read the motion. And it is in accordance with General Bylaw three point one four and the Town Council Policy Regarding Control and Regulation of the Public Ways to approve the following parking regulations on Kendrick Place. Parking prohibited as a tow zone on the east side of Kendrick Place from North Hampton Road to end of street. Parking prohibited as a tow zone on the west side of Kendrick Place for a distance of thirty feet north of North Hampton Road. Parking permitted on the west side of Kendrick Place from a point thirty feet from North Hampton Road northerly to the end of Kendrick Place. Is there a second?
Second, Ross?
Thank you, Evan. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to begin the roll call vote, beginning with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Dumont?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye, and Mandy Jo Hanke?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalony Baumill is absent. Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
It is unanimous for those of us that are here, it is twelve, zero, zero, and one absent. We're going to take a five-minute break and reconvene at eight thirty-five. Please mute and turn your video off. As you return, please turn your video back on. Please turn your video on when you return, so I know that you're here. Okay, Alyssa, are you back? Thank you. Okay. Let me begin the following discussion with a statement and then a couple of comments. This, there is no bylaw that we are voting on to approve tonight. Okay, all bylaws require two readings. This is the first reading for all four that appear on the agenda, even the one that we've seen twice before, and all we're doing is extending the date again. Okay? However, before moving on, I'd like to share a few observations that are reflective and supportive of our town government today, tomorrow, and long into the future. They in no way reflect how I, as one of thirteen councillors, will vote on any bylaw. We've heard several comments prior to this evening and tonight regarding a desire to delay any further action on zoning amendments, in fact, all actions, until the next council is seated. These comments include various stated reasons. This is a lame-duck council, and we should not do anything for the remainder of our term. The public has spoken through the election, thus creating a mandate. There has been insufficient time, research, and consideration given to these zoning articles. And finally, we have not honored various state laws, charter requirements, and rules of procedure. Regarding point one, does that mean that all councillors only serve for one year and ten months? And that no legislative action should take place between an election and the seating of the next council? This is not what the voters wanted when they voted for the charter. They wanted a year-round government. If we are not going to take action now, then we should have stopped taking at least certain actions last winter when we started lining all of these zoning articles up. The first, we, the first ones we discussed were way back in December of two thousand twenty. The planning staff came to us in February of twenty, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. And in addition to that, since November second, we've taken or are scheduled to take several other important votes on the budget guidelines, on establishing the Cress and DEI departments, on evaluating the town manager, and setting town manager goals for the coming year, most of which the next council can change. We have a job to do, and refusing to take timely action is not in the best interest of the community. Regarding point two, the creation of a mandate. Occasionally, we see a true sea change that might prompt us to take the extraordinary step of delaying action. However, the argument that the people have spoken seems to me requires some close examination. We have elected six outstanding new councillors. That vote was confirmed just this past week. And while it is true that two of the councillors who have advocated to rezone the CVS parking lot were not re-elected, they were defeated by a total of fifty votes. They were defeated by a total of fifty votes and lost in one of each of their two precincts. Other incumbents, though not at all, were who were reelected or unopposed to the best of my knowledge, did not campaign for or against zoning changes. And the chair of the CRC committee, who argued and voted for the zoning changes in CRC, received the second highest number of votes in her townwide election. It is quite possible that residents in different neighborhoods hold different views on this issue. For example, the residents who don't do not live downtown are the ones most likely to need and use a garage. That's okay. Our job is to take the community wide view. Regarding the can, the issue of insufficient time research and consideration. I refer you to the second attachment to the future agenda items that's in your packet. It is the step by step process for each bylaw under consideration and includes the date of each step, starting with the initial referral. Two of the bylaws mixed use and parking and access related loosely in this case as apartment apartment definitions was presented in a list in February of two thousand twenty one. They were referred by this council for hearing by the planning board and CRC in June twenty eighth of two thousand twenty one. The rezoning of the CVS parking lot introduced to the town council on May twenty fourth was referred to the planning board and CRC for hearings. Each have been developed, vetted, and legally reviewed, including the involvement of a professional and well qualified planning staff. Planning board hearings in three instances heard and reheard by CRC and reviewed by the town's attorney. We do not lack information and turning back the clock at this point would be a disservice to many residents and staff who've brought us to this point. We need to do our work and vote yes or no and move on. Finally, in the process of bringing these bylaws forward, all state laws, the charter, council rules of procedure, and practices of the relevant bodies have been followed. Having said that, I encourage the town planning staff to seek comments on the planning board reports and repost them in time for our next meeting. My request to all of us and to the residents is let's agree to disagree. But do not, but we do not do not want to compromise democracy in the city known as the town of Amherst, based upon which side of the issues we fall on. We're going to proceed next with the first of the items. The first item is item article fourteen. It is the temporary zoning permitting for certain use during COVID nineteen emergency and its aftermath. And I'm going to call on Chris Brestrop and Rob Mora to present this and then go to the planning board report. We're joined tonight by Doug Marshall, Chair of the Planning Board. The Community Resources Committee Report and then GOL. Uh, Chris and Rob.
Good evening. I would like to have Rob Mora present this first article, Article fourteen Temporary Zoning. He's the most familiar with it. Thank you.
Hi, Rob Moore, Building Commissioner. Um, this is a very simple change to the previously approved temporary zoning article fourteen. We are just proposing to extend the uh, the effective date through the year two thousand and twenty twenty two. A little bit about how this bylaw has been working. Uh, it was, it was really put into use this summer. Uh, when we really started to see a lot more activity happening, particularly with restaurants, of course. Uh, but we also used Article fourteen for a couple of retail establishments and a expansion of a parking area for a medical facility. Uh, there's a list in the October memo from the town manager to the council that uh, gave a, you know, a short description of the uh, the uses that have benefited from the article fourteen, both temporary, permanent changes. And since then, there's been another handful of, you know, four or five additional approvals granted, including one today for a wholesale baker, a new wholesale baker in South Amherst. Uh, so I think it's um, safe to say that it's been a very effective, useful, um, successful temporary measure that has helped businesses get their, get their permitting and approvals and uh, in operation on an expedited schedule. I um, have not received any complaints about any of the uh, the permits or approvals that have been granted. And in fact, last week had my first request for information on one of the previous approvals. Uh, a, a resident neighbor to a, a project came in to ask for a set of plans. Uh, but otherwise I haven't heard any other, you know, negative feedback and um, of course, very positive um, feedback from the bid and chamber that have helped tremendously with particularly the restaurants in the downtown. So, uh, yeah, we'd be here to answer any questions if there are any. Uh, thank you.
Uh, Planning Board Report.
Would you like me to give the planning board report?
Please.
Would you like Doug Marshall to do that?
Um, either way, Doug? Would you like to go ahead?
I would defer to Chris on that.
Thank you, Chris.
The planning board voted seven to zero to recommend the town council adopt this amendment.
Okay. Uh, Community Resources Committee, Mandy Jo.
Yes, thank you. Um. I normally just give the total vote, but because of things that have gone on, I will be a little more extensive today. This was referred to the council on October eighteenth, twenty twenty one. CRC held its hearing on November ninth, twenty twenty one. And CRC made its recommendation on November sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Um. Under state law, the council has the ability to vote when the earlier of twenty one days has passed or a planning board report and recommendation is received by the planning board from the date of the planning board hearing closure. Planning board hearing closure was November seventeenth, twenty twenty one. The planning board report on this item was received on November twenty fourth, meaning that we now have the ability as a council to vote on this matter under state law. Given all of that, um, you've heard a summary of the proposal, so I will not go forward with that. Um, but the CRC unanimously recommended approval of this proposal to extend by one year, Article fourteen.
Thank you. GOL.
Oh, wait, can I say one more thing?
Please.
Completely forgot the first thing I was gonna do that was on my list, which is to thank the planning staff and planning board for all of their hard work throughout the entire year. Chris Brestrop, Rob Moore, Nate Malloy, Maureen Pollock, and Ben Braker are part of this planning staff, and they have been fantastic, not just on temporary zoning, but on everything we will be hearing tonight and everything we've heard and dealt with in the past months, including things we've already voted on. Um, and so I just wanted to thank them. I want to thank the planning board who has met um, many, many times. I know Doug is here. There might be others in the attendees. Um, they, they have risen to the occasion of all of this, along with doing all of their statutory regulatory duties too. And so on, on behalf of CRC, I just want to thank both the planning staff and the planning board for their hard work this year.
Thank you, Mandy Jo. Kathy? Oh, I'm sorry.
GOL first, right?
I want GOL. Uh, George.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, GOL met on November seventeenth and voted three zero with two absent to declare Article fourteen temporary zoning bylaw, to be clear, consistent, actionable. You have the town attorney um, report in your packet.
Okay. Kathy, question, comment?
Um, a comment and a question. Um, I, I too want to thank the planning staff. I've attended as many meetings as I can of yours. And then when there started to be repeat meetings, I thought, whoa, and different meetings. But I, I particularly appreciate what you've done with this, with this temporary zoning. I thought it was creative when you came to it with us with it. I think it has done a lot of good. So I, I just have two questions about it. Um, is there a strong rationale for twelve months? I have no, I have no doubt it should be extended. So the question is, why not, why twelve and not six, um, another half year? And secondly, have you learned or are you thinking through, are there some things that you've been able to do? And I think it's Rob in particular has been able to do more quickly. That would have been a more arduous process that you might want to make permanent. Um, and I know this is a risky thing to ask, but you know, are there some things that you said, you know, we could simplify some steps here? Um, because we're not, we're not gaining, we're not losing a lot by not doing it. So I'm not talking about everything in it. So just some temporary, temporary thought, and you don't have to be pinned to this on learning about ways of doing things. And my one example would be when I was at the CVS where you allow them to put that small kiosk, they put up some translucent walls. That seems like such a simple change for a clear need. And if that would have had to go through months of process, it's where they give their COVID shots. Um, so it's that kind of thing. I'm, so that's what I'm looking for. Which kinds of things might you think? And to what extent, um, would you be coming, might you be coming back to us with those ideas sometime before the end of next year?
Rob?
Uh, yes, the first question, why, why twelve months instead of six? Um, a couple of reasons for that, you know, these, these approvals are granted pretty quickly, but they do take some time to prepare the application. So, um, the normal process that could be ninety plus days when an applicant is working their way through the special permit process. Um, you know, comes after, uh, the applicant works with staff to make sure they have all of the issues, work with their architects, work with their builders. Uh, so I think there, you know, there is some time that's needed. Um, you know, what we do know coming into the spring is that um, we may be faced with the governor's allowance of outdoor dining ending again. Uh, that's due to expire. The ABCC rules are due to expire, temporary rules are due to expire in the spring. So we might be adjusting quickly around that timeframe to work with applicants for summer outdoor dining. But we hadn't had to use, how to use the article fourteen in the past because of the governor's order. So six months, you know, coming into a year of, of what we're not too sure about what's going to happen in the spring. Um, you know, led us to thinking twelve months would be better. Uh, as far as the permanent changes go, I can think of two things. Uh, the, the first thing is that, uh, we don't have any provision in our current bylaw for temporary uses. And just like the kiosk that you pointed out as an example, there are so many other potential temporary uses related to agriculture, things that happen on farms, events, um, whether it could be restaurants in the downtown or different types of activities. So I think we should be looking at permanent changes to allow some sort of a path for uh, temporary uses to occur. And the other one, I think we've gotten pretty good with restaurants. Uh, you know, we, we, I, we, we support inspection services and planning board. Uh, planning staff support the zoning board of appeals when they're granting these special permits over the years. So we were able to look at those and use those as a guide and a template to, to make sure we were carrying on what we thought the board would do in these situations for the new restaurants that have been approved under Article fourteen. So there certainly is, uh, you know, a worthy discussion to have about whether or not those uh, will, would need the lengthy special permit process in the future, or if we should look for a way to um, expedite the, uh, the permitting for those. Chris might have more to add.
Chris?
No, I don't have anything more to add. Thank you.
Um, and Kathy, I want to thank you for that question. It was on my mind and something that we can look forward to in the future. Are there any other questions about this? We are not taking a vote tonight. It will be on the agenda next week. Okay, then I'm going to move on to the next one, which is the amendment to Article thirteen Use Regulations Section three point three two five Mixed Use Building and Article twelve Definitions. And I'm calling, going to call him Planning Director Chris Brestrop and Senior Planning Direct Planner Nate Malloy.
We have Nate Malloy, who's going to give his, uh, give the presentation, and it's really Article three. I think it was misrepresented in one of the documents that you have, but it's Article three Use Regulations and Article twelve Definitions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, thank you. Uh, I'm Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. I'm going to share my screen, if that's all right, just to walk through the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, yeah, so as um, as Chris mentioned, it's Article three um, and Article twelve. It, I'm assuming that's visible for everyone.
It is.
Great, thanks. Just a quick timeline. Um, you know, the, the CRC and the planning board have submitted their reports on this, but uh, this was mentioned earlier. This was initially reviewed by town council and referred at the end of June. Uh, the planning board and the Community Resource Committee held a public hearing on July twenty first. Uh, and so, you know, after that, in August and September, there were a few changes brought about um, at, at meetings. One was a discussion about um, allowing, you know, the non residential use on upper floors and staff determined there was some better ways to calculate uh, uses, um, a percentage of uses. So, you know, what, what seemed to happen was there was, you know, in this timeline, there's a delay. So in October twentieth, there was a discussion by the planning board on a revised amendment. Uh, there was a new public hearing at the end of October by the CRC and then votes um, in early November by the planning board and the CRC. Uh, and, you know, review by GOL in November seventeen. So there was a little bit of a, a, you know, a month or two where there were some discussions about how to refine the bylaw um, after the public hearing based on public comments and staff input. And so, um, you know, the bylaw seeks to define a non residential use, uh, residential uses and parking. So there's really three uses uh, in the bylaw. And um, you know, the summary of the process after the initial um, referral is, you know, how are these uses distributed in a building and what percentages are the right, um, right, you know, proportions on the first floor? Is it, you know, all of the first floor as a non residential use? Is it forty percent? Is it fifty percent? So there were a lot of comments about that. Um, you know, really the, the discussion centered on activating the street and the pedestrian experience and really what is the right way to do that? Currently, in the mixed use in our, in the zoning bylaw, there is no definition for mixed use building. And there is no criteria to have any, really any percentage of a building be a non residential use. So, you know, we've seen a few mixed use buildings where there's really a two hundred square foot office, and that counts as the non residential piece. Um, so we, you know, we inserted a refined definition of a mixed use building in Article twelve. Um, and we clarified how the space is counted toward non residential space. Uh, you know, in the bylaw that was initially referred, uh, common spaces, so hallways, stairways, elevators, um, wasn't really clear about how that could be counted towards residential or non residential space. And, uh, believe it or not, that can add up to a, a significant percentage. Um, and so that was clarified in this process. Um, and we also added a definition for permit granting authority. It's a term that's used locally in the bylaw. It's not a new term. And so we, we added that definition um, because it was already included in this amendment and it was recommended by, by legal counsel. So the, the current amendment, the strategy is it creates a definition for mixed use building. Um, and it also defines the permit granting authority. I'll walk through the language in a minute. Um, it updates Article three with new standards and conditions. So it replaces what's in the existing use chart with new standards and conditions. Um, its goal is to activate the street with non residential uses. So it requires that a majority, you know, a predominant, um, uh, you know, the facade facing the street is predominantly non residential. Um, it allows the flexibility of locating non residential uses on the upper floors or in the back of a building, so long as the, the street facing portion of the first floor is non residential. So that's something that I think may be somewhat confusing. Uh, it was discussed today in comment that it is allowing uses to not face the street, but it really is, that is a requirement. Um, it really calculates the percentage of non residential use as the active um, business or, you know, non residential space. So it excludes common areas so that thirty percent requirement uh, of a building footprint really is the active business space. Um, it limits parking and residential uses to the back of the building on the first floor. So it has an orientation requirement for um, those two uses. And it seeks to diversify the bedroom count for buildings with ten or, ten or more units. Uh, and it's a similar in the apartment definition. So, you know, you can have, you can't have all one bedroom type in a mixed use building. If you have over ten units, you have to have at least two bedroom types, preferably more. And then just to walk through the language um, of the amendment itself. The, um, we're not changing where a mixed use building or how it's permitted. So, you know, that's already been So, you know, that's already been decided that in the business, you know, general business in the, in the downtown, it's by site plan review. In the village centers, it's mostly by site plan review. And then special permit in the RVC. So that's not changing. What's shown in strike through here is what's currently in Article three, standards and conditions. And so that's being proposed to be removed in the entirety with these new, the new sections here in bold. I'm going to jump down to the bottom. So in Article 12, we're defining a mixed use building as a building containing one or more dwelling units in combination with permitted non-residential uses. And then we're defining permit granting authority as the planning board, zoning board, as the bylaw may designate, or if no specific designation, the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer. So in Massachusetts, the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer by statute. And that clarifies in this bylaw when we reference permit granting authority. So, you know, if the use is permitted by the planning board, then the planning board is the permit granting authority. So there's these five conditions that are laid out here. You know, the first one says no more than 70% of the gross floor area of the first or ground.
Could you increase the print on the screen? Thank you.
Yeah, I never know how visible it is to, how is that?
Lot better. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry about that. I, I have a big screen in my home, so it looks, it looks good to me. The, the first paragraph here says no more than 70% of the gross floor area of the first or ground floor shall be residential use, parking or common areas shared by multiple uses. And, you know, the first or ground floor, it's really, we have, we described that below, but it's really this, the same thing. And, you know, so if there's a, a building that, you know, sometimes say the, the first floor may be below grade a bit, the permit granting authority can decide what, you know, what is really the, the first or ground floor. The key to this, which really we don't have in the bylaw now, is that at least 30% of the gross floor area, we can say of the first floor, shall be any non-residential use permitted in that district other than parking. And it includes incidental spaces. And what this means is, you know, if there's a restaurant and they have some storage that's part of the restaurant space or the kitchen area, that's part of the 30%, it's part of the active space. And then there's this new provision, except that the permit granting authority may allow required non-residential uses to be distributed on any floor or in any building of a multiple building development on the same parcel, provided that the portion of the first floor facing the street shall be occupied predominantly by the non-residential use. So, you know, two members of the CRC recommended that there be this flexibility. Planning staff worked with it a little bit and through public comment and discussions with legal counsel, you know, provided a language here. And so this is saying, if you have a 10,000 square foot building, 3,000 square feet has to be non-residential use. And that section of the building facing the street on the first floor has to be predominantly non-residential. So if it's a, a long narrow lot, you know, most of, most of that front edge facing the street has to be non-residential. And then if that only is, say, 1,500 square feet, then 1,500 more square feet could be on an upper floor to satisfy the 30%. And this is all at the discretion of the permit granting authority. So, you know, we're putting deference into the planning board and zoning board to review these projects. And so we, you know, they, there's criteria in the bylaw. They can ask for, you know, different site plans. They can ask a developer, an applicant to, to show what it would look like if the uses were allocated differently, different spaces in a development. So, you know, it's something that the board can, can review. Because we're asking them, an applicant now to show how they're counting 30% or 70%. So they actually are going to show floor plans for this, for a mixed use building. A new section that was added since June and over the discussions is this next paragraph. For the purposes of the sex, of the section, incidental spaces shall not include common areas shared by multiple uses or other spaces not contiguous to the non-residential use unless the space is included in the lease. And so for instance, if you have a lobby that goes to an elevator, to the back of a building to residential uses, and it also has an entrance to a non-residential use, an applicant could have previously said, well, you know, half of that hallway, half of that lobby, if there's public restrooms or other spaces, half of the storage areas counts towards non-residential use. And that could be, you know, 10 or 15% of, of, of the floor. We're saying that this is no longer counted as part of that 30%. It's no longer non-residential because it's com, it's a common area. Unless, you know, unless it's non-contiguous and there's a lease agreement. So if a, if a kitchen, if a restaurant needs some backend storage that's not contiguous to its space and it's in a, in the lease agreement, the permit granting authority can have that count towards a 30%. The next paragraph, any dwelling unit or enclosed parking shall be located at the rear of the building to reduce visibility from the street. For sloping lots or lots with frontage on more than one street, the permit granting authority shall decide what is the street. And so that's something that, you know, if it's a corner lot or if it's a sloping lot, the permit granting authority can work with an applicant to determine what is the, the facade that needs to be predominantly non-residential. And then the bedroom count, no more than 50% of the total number of dwelling units shall have the same bedroom count. You know, if it's 10 or more units. And, you know, this is a provision we have currently in the bylaw. The permit granting authority may waive or modify this requirement if the units are affordable, if all the dwelling units are affordable. And so, you know, this could allow, you know, you know, a 30-unit building in which all the units are affordable, they could all have studios or one bedrooms, but then all the units would have to be affordable. And I, I'll stop there and take any questions. I have some illustrations or things if there's clarifications needed. But I think you're muted.
Yeah, I am. Thank you very much. I'm actually going to go ahead and ask for the various reports. Planning board report, Chris?
The planning board voted on November 3rd. They voted for to one, to zero with two members absent to recommend that town council adopt a zoning amendment. But I have to note that they did meet several times. They had a public hearing on July 21st. And then they had deliberation, quite lengthy deliberation on August 18th. And they had more deliberation on October 20th. And they finally reached their recommendation on November 3rd. So this was very thoroughly discussed. And even though the public hearing had closed on July 21st, the planning board continued to take public comment through most, if not all of those meetings. So thank you.
Doug, would you like to add anything to that comment?
I guess the only thing I would add is that I, my recollection is that we actually voted on an earlier version of this and then, and then we actually, you know, voted on the final form of it after it had gone to CRC for their discussion and also some more deliberation by the planning staff. So we actually endorsed this once in an earlier form and a second time in its current form. I will say that, you know, the, probably the most controversial part was what percentage should we really be requiring on the first floor? And how restrictive should we be about its distribution? You know, whether it's all on the first floor or whether it can go elsewhere. You know, I think we all had the same objective to try to activate the street with as much non-residential activity as possible. Most of the comments against the, the amendment had to do with the percentage of the space being too low. And I think this is a case where we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And we're going from a situation where we have virtually no definition for a mixed use building. And we now have at least a minimum requirement for the size of the non-residential use under that category. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Jo, Community Resources Committee.
Thank you. Again, I'll, I'll start with, this was referred to both CRC and the planning board on June 28th, 2021, five months ago. The first joint public hearing was held on July 21st, 2021. At that point, both public hearings, both bodies closed their public hearing, which meant under state law. The council could have voted on this as early as August 11th. The initial CRC initially voted to recommend this, and a prior amendment, Doug hinted at that too, with an initial planning board vote to recommend. On August 24th, 2021 was the first vote for CRC for a recommendation. After that vote happened, which was a vote after the planning board had voted to recommend, the planning department noticed an issue with the definition of incidental space and asked for time to rework and add that definition. That delay, given that the hearing was initially held on July 21st, resulted in a 90-day deadline for the town council to actually hold its vote to pass, that that wouldn't have happened, given the requirement for two readings and all. And so CRC noticed, publicly noticed another public hearing as required under state law on October 26th, 2021. And CRC voted again to recommend adoption on November 16th, 2021. And that vote was three in favor and two against. A couple of things I want to mention from the report, or not quite from the report. The, the problems that CRC and the planning department and all identified with the current bylaw, and I just want to set these forth, they were addressed sort of in Nate Malloy's presentation, was that at this point in a mixed use building, there is no requirement for different bedroom sizes at all. And so this amendment attempts to address that. And at this point in time, there is no minimum requirement for non-residential uses. Nate Malloy talked about that in his presentation. In the current amendment, in the current bylaw. And in the current bylaw, there is no location requirement for those non-residential uses. It can be put anywhere in the building. It does not have to be on the first floor. And so the proposed revisions attempt to address these issues that many people have identified as problems with the current bylaw. And then I just wanted to mention one other thing. The second definition that was just recently added of permit granting authority added at the request of KP Law. That use of that term appears not just in the mixed use bylaw. It, it appears throughout the zoning bylaw. And so one thing is that it is important to remember that as we're voting and as we're thinking about motions in next week regarding this amendment. And again, as I want to say, the recommendation was to adopt the proposed revisions three to two. The report from the CRC indicates reasons for that and talks about a retail market analysis study. And the two individuals who voted not to recommend or voted against the motion to recommend adoption. The CRC report also indicates their reasons for voting against that recommendation. And I'm also happy to answer questions.
Thank you. George CRC, I mean GOL.
GOL met November 17th, again voted three to zero with two absent to declare this zoning amendment to be clear, consistent, actionable. And the KP Law Bill of Health is also in your packet for this particular bylaw.
Thank you. We'll begin with questions. Kathy?
Can I make comments rather than questions?
Sure.
Okay, so I want to start off with thanking the planning staff. Because I, the, just to shut, set the record straight, Lynn, this was not on the January list of priorities. And I know for a fact it wasn't because I tried desperately to get it on with a substitute amendment. Only apartments was on and I thought mixed use was missing. And I'd been attending some meetings that Chris Brestrop and others were in that started a discussion on mixed use a long time ago. Indeed, they had recommended to town meeting a 60% definition of non-residential. And I thought they came up with an excellent staff proposal at the end of March, which is when it started this ticking, which would have been 50% non-residential with some provision for open space and the same provision of a mix of bedroom units. That got watered down, got reduced at first, removing public space altogether. And then the first time we saw it, it was 40%. So it went from 60 to 50 to 40. And then after the public hearing, almost all the comments, the public hearing is why not 60? Because people remember the original. And, and somewhere along the line between July and the next CRC hearing, it became 30% with the idea it could be distributed, not just on the first floor. I see this as watering down an excellent idea. I am totally for putting this definition on the books. We've really had a loophole. If we want a downtown that is high energy and vitality, Gabrielle Ghul says, look to the future. If we don't have commercial retail potential on that first floor for small shops, not just big shops, creative developers, we won't have much more than a bedroom community in our downtown and village centers. We really need to be thinking toward the future, not just to the COVID era. And I believe the reason it went from 40 to 30 was COVID area thinking, not future area oriented. I've watched what Burlington and other places have been able to do, small shops, pop-up shops. Again, creative use of that first ground floor and maybe some on upper floors where you walk upstairs to your dining room or an outside piece. So I am with a, going back to 50% and, and Doug said, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I've worked on healthcare reform for a really long time. We got the Affordable Care Act because we wanted something. We never thought it was great, but I think we could have the good be better than the so-so. I would like good as the starting point. And I think good, we need to have a higher percentage. The whittling dam just doesn't make any sense. We can challenge our developers to be creative. Those that really want to contribute can contribute. And I'll, I'll, I see the clock is ticking. The planning board pulled together a chart that I'm going to ask, we put into the record for at least next time on what do other towns do? The typical is 60, some are at 100%. And I found some on the West Coast that asked, the rest of the ground floor could be all retail commercial, at least designed to be, even if it's partly. So if you need an expansion space, you can. So I don't think we should start too low. I think we need to start at a place we can really live with. But otherwise, I think doing mixed use is a great idea. We need to plug this hole in our, in our zoning laws.
Andy?
So I'm glad I'm following up on Kathy because I just have a slight extension with my first question from what she said. I was curious whether in the BG zoning area, whether it would have been possible to have a different rule apply for buildings that have large street front as opposed to other buildings that are set back from the street. Because one of the concerns that I think that we've heard a lot about is retail, as Kathy mentioned. And it would seem that recognizing the importance of being able to use street front appropriately would be good. So was that, is that possible and was it considered? And I guess the other thing that I'll ask is probably directed to Mandy because I think she has expertise on this. And that is that a lot of people have been complaining that we ignored the moratorium. But my recollection is just the, this particular bylaw and at least one other we may be considering, were in fact, things that would have been required to be considered and revised according to the proposed moratorium that was defeated in the council. And so just, I don't have the moratorium language in front of me, but if it's possible to clarify that, I'd appreciate it. So thank you.
I'm going to pause for a moment. Mandy Jo, did you want to respond to either of the past two commenters?
So I would defer to Kathy, who was nodding vigorously that the mixed use building was part of the moratorium. Bylaw proposal.
You know, it, Mandy, it was in that we talked about it needed a definition and all the, the streetscape was important. And I thought the planning staff, when they came back with the first version of mixed use was incredibly creative because they thought of, what about benches outside, some public space? They really tried to bundle it all up in a definition of an activated. They really tried to bundle it all up in a definition of an activated building. People live upstairs and come downstairs and they do something and visitors come in. So I thought, Chris, your staff was extremely creative, that March 30th version. You had my vote at that point. You know, so I think we're juggling some excellent ideas and we just need to make it as good as we can. And I think we can make it better than the current version I'm seeing.
I've raised my hand because, two things. First of all, Kathy, my reference during my earlier comments was not to the January document, but to the February document from the planning board. And it did include mixed use because they heard what you were thinking of. Second of all, if we say 30%, does that mean they can go further? Can they go 40 or 50%? It's a simple, straightforward question. Chris?
Yes, of course, they can have as much as they want of non-residential use in the building. They could have, you know, a couple of floors of non-residential use to do that. Yep.
Okay, so it's not a, it's a minimum, it's not a max. Thank you very much. Dorothy?
One of the concerns that has been raised has to do with some of the limiting phrases. And I agree that 30% is too low, particularly when you add that word predominantly, which is right there predominantly. That's a wiggle room word. It's a loophole word. And I just think it should not be in there, it should be struck out. But we talk about street facing. I would like to do, say, street slash public facing. Because if you have long, narrow buildings, and we seem to be having some and some more coming, then the sides are often wonderful commercial spaces, particularly if you think of small shops. And we've had some experience of that in Amherst, which have been successful. So if it's just 30% of a very narrow front, that's not much commercial space. So I would prefer it to be street and public facing. And I totally agree that the public, the open space slash public space should be put back in. My biggest complaint is that doing all of these motions at once, we would do a little bit of this one, a little bit of that one, and everything would come back changed each time. And then we would do some pieces, and this is not the whole mixed use. Oh, it's only part of it, and that'll be fixed later. And I'm thinking, let's do the whole amendment. Let's do it so that we have the whole image, the whole picture, and we can imagine it. And we're not very far away. And the planning department has, I do not know how many versions it produced, but it produced many, many versions, did tremendous amount of work. And I think we could do that. My question is, I'm assuming that we don't have to mention inclusionary zoning, that that's just overall, all new building will have a certain percentage of inclusionary zoning? Or should that be at least mentioned in here? It's a question.
Chris, please, go ahead.
Yes, so I wanted to say a few things, but one of them is that inclusionary zoning is a separate zoning amendment that applies to all buildings that were all developments that have more than 10 units, except for some. I think there are two types of developments that are excluded, standard subdivisions and cluster subdivisions. But it would certainly apply to mixed-use buildings, as is being shown by the fact that the archipelago building that's just been permitted at 1113 East Pleasant Street will include 11 affordable units. But I'd also like to make sure that everybody understands that when we say 30% of the first floor, we're not talking about 30% of the frontage. We're talking about 30% of the square footage of the first floor. So I think that was something that Dorothy may not have fully understood. We're talking about predominantly when we talk about the frontage and the area that is public facing or frontage would be predominantly non-residential. And we're not talking about 30%. We're talking obviously predominantly is more than 50%. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we decided not to have open space and public space and form-based code aspects to this zoning bylaw because we're really dealing with a use category. And what we'd like to do is, once we get a chance, once we have a little bit of time to deal with this, we'd like to think about how mixed-use buildings would be developed in different districts in town. And there would be different requirements in the BG and different requirements in Business Village Center and Business Neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. We don't want to lump them all in together and have the same requirements for every place, which is, I believe, what we had in March. So that's why we pulled back from that. And we do definitely intend to get back to that public space and open space around a mixed-use building. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi.
I'm sorry, Steve. Mandy Jo, did you have your hand up to answer a question? No, please go ahead, Steve.
Hi, so actually, I wanted to explain why I was one of the two people to vote no. And honestly, it was a borderline vote. And I knew that our vote was an advisory vote, that's the real vote, would happen in the meeting after this meeting. But I voted no because I was concerned about two things. A question that came up from really Council Ross about what happens about someone that, say, owns an apartment building or wants to develop an apartment building. But I think the example was an existing apartment building. And they want to add a very small shop, like a cafe or whatever, a thrift shop. So actually, they want to get into the mixed-use space, but they want to do it in a very small increment. And the answer was from Bob Mora was they can't do it. That they'd either have to stay in apartment building or they'd have to go whole hog and meet whatever this council decides if we vote in the affirmative. So they'd have to do 30%. So it'd have to be more than a little coffee shop, it'd have to be much bigger than that. My other concern was about pre-existing non-conforming. So generally, when I was on the planning board, we tried not to pass bylaws that caused existing buildings to become basically non-conforming. So this would do that for some buildings. But in a subsequent discussion with Mr. Mora, I came to realize that actually Mass General Law and actually the town bylaws are very forgiving for such. And we actually do allow expansion of non-conforming uses with not as much hassle that I was concerned about. So my inclination at this point is to support this particular bylaw. And the reason is this, it's much better than what we have. So we're not comparing this bylaw to some perfect bylaw. So the question isn't, do we vote on this or the more perfect bylaw that you guys have in your heads? Or it's, do you want to pass this bylaw or the one that exists? The one that exists doesn't define anything. It's basically the ATM machine enabling an apartment building to become a mixed-use building. So literally, that is what could happen. I mean, that's the, that is what could happen. I completely agree with all of the comments that the next step after we get beyond this is that there become mixed use 1 and mixed use 2. Mixed use 1 is the mixed-use buildings on major commercial streets with a higher percentage of ground floor non-residential space. Mixed use 2 is on less busy streets or in areas that are less public-facing. Mixed use 1 with a higher non-residential space, easier to permit. If used 2, harder to bring, something like that. The next council, the next planning board can go for it. But I think this is actually a really good bylaw at this point. And I urge my fellow counselors to support it. Three minutes.
Thank you. Mandy Jo?
Thank you. Steve said a lot about a lot of what I was going to say. I just want to bring people back to retail market analysis that was done in 2018 on our town at the behest of our then economic development director. And it was done by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And in that retail market analysis in 2018, they did a market demand study. And they determined there was 39,000 square foot total in town, not just in downtown, in all of Amherst, of retail demand space. Since that study was done, about 22,000 to 27,000 new square feet has been added or permitted in town. That includes 22,000 square feet of added retail space in North Square in the Mill District. That leaves 17,000 square feet of retail demand in town as of the 2018 study. We can say all we want about the study, but that's what the study says. 11 to 13 East Pleasant Street is 17,500 square foot. That means, just think of that percentage. If the percentage we're talking about goes up to 100%, there is no more demand in town once that building is built. 30% of 17,500 is 5,000 square foot. We only need three of those buildings. And you can say all you want about those buildings, but if three of those buildings are built after we hopefully pass this bylaw, we'll have met the 2018 Retail Market Analysis Demand Study at 30%. If we go up to 70%, we're done with one building. So I look at this and I say, you can argue about percentages, but this is a good place to start because that 17,000 remaining is through the entire town, not just downtown. And so if we make the percentage too high, as I've sort of just said, we could potentially do with some of the arguments going on, well, might have empty storefronts or we won't have any new buildings and we won't have any new apartments. Maybe some people want that. Maybe, maybe that's what some people are going for. But we won't have buildings because it won't be financially feasible. And so we have to find a sweet spot. And I really think right now, 30%, given where we are, is a good compromise between what we have, as Steve said, that is not good and something where we might be able to get to if we continue to create demand. So that is the basics of what I wanted to say. I hope everyone will recognize this is better than what we have now. It may not be what you want, but it is a fantastic compromise to solve the issue of all one-bedroom apartments going in and mixed-use buildings. It won't happen again if we pass this. Retail not being on the ground floor can't happen if we pass this and having a minimum requirement. Thank you.
Darcy?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad that I had the opportunity to, just get this, to both hear and read the public comments on the zoning amendments and agree that there has not been adequate public input into the remaining zoning proposals before us. The process of vetting the proposals through the planning board and planning staff has been rushed and confusing. The reason for adding two meetings in this legislative session was exactly to rush them through. This is not the type of deliberative planning the Charter Commission promised before the charter vote. There was the promise not to rush. So I hope counselors will see how carrying the three remaining zoning amendments over to the next council is actually prudent and advisable. Doing so would be consistent with the action the council just took last week on the solar moratorium, which was proposed to prevent rushing into solar development before we've established town values and criteria for development. That was what residents expect of us, and that's what the Charter Commission promised. There's no substantive urgency to passing these amendments this month in a rush. So though I generally agree with Kathy on the substance of her opinions on these zoning amendments, I'm more interested in simply carrying these amendments over to the new council. I said I couldn't make this meeting during the holiday season, but I ended up being convinced to come. It wasn't good timing for me. I am pretty exhausted, as I'm sure a lot of you are. This feels like it's pushing us all to our limits, to quote another counselor. It's insane to have seven meetings in a row at this time of year. So I am, I just wanted to put that out there for me. I kind of need to attend to my family right now, so I'm going to sign off. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Darcy. Kathy? Actually, Kathy.
Evan's hand is up and he hasn't spoken, so.
Thank you. Evan, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I am planning to support this for the same reason that I think Steve and Mandy hinted at, which is that it is better than the current lack of a definition that we have. And I agree that we need to fix the mixed-use definition. I don't know if 30% or 40% or 60% is the right number, but I trust the expertise of our planning department and also our planning board that recommended this and bringing this forward. Because my concern is that the desire to push that percentage higher is based on a desire to have more retail downtown, which I understand. But applies, I think in CRC, I said, sort of a Field of Dreams approach of, well, if we build commercial space and we build retail space, then we'll get retail space. And that movie, that movie wasn't real, right? I mean, that's not how it works. And so this is my concern, is that if we push that percentage higher and we say that we need to increase the amount of retail and commercial space that is built, but then we don't also do the things to create the demand for that commercial and retail space, then we end up with what Mandy said, which is a whole bunch of vacant storefronts, or we end up stopping redevelopment in our downtown. And that's my real concern. So I think it's one thing to build the retail space, but I worry that we're setting an expectation with this that if we require a certain percentage of commercial and retail space, then all of a sudden, we're going to have more retail and commercial downtown. And that's just simply not how it's going to work because it only will work if it's financially viable. And so I think what we need to do is also make sure that we're making the other investments to make retail viable downtown. I think that involves infrastructure, including parking, including perhaps a downtown parking structure. I think it's about making downtown a destination by doing things that we've been doing, such as the Kendrick Park Playground, such as the Outdoor Performing Arts Center on the Town Common. And I think it's also about making sure that we provide a downtown consumer base by increasing housing production downtown. And so my worry is that we're hearing a lot of folks who are demanding more retail downtown, but who are also resisting a parking structure or who are also resisting greater housing density downtown. And so my feeling is that 30% is a good number for this time because I think it meets the current demand that we have downtown. And then what I'm hoping I see future councils do is work on those other things, providing the infrastructure, making downtown more of a destination and increasing housing density downtown so that there's a downtown consumer base that will patronize those downtown commercial and retail establishments. And I think at that point, there'll be a better discussion to have about, do we want to raise that percentage? But to me, I think this actually is a good starting point because I think it matches the actual retail demand that we have downtown. And I think that we need to move away from this idea of, well, if we build more retail space, then we'll get more retail. That's not just how it's going to work if we don't do these other things. So I support moving this forward as a first step. And I think the percentage matches now. But I also think that if we're actually committed to retail downtown, this is not going to do it. And if people are thinking this is going to do it, we need to step back from that. Thank you.
Chris, you have your hand up. I assume you'd like to respond to a statement?
Well, I wanted to just suggest that people take a walk around our downtown and see some of the empty storefronts. There are at least three and potentially four empty storefronts on the south side of Main Street, right next to Town Hall. There are several other empty ground floor spaces that haven't been occupied for a while. 11 East Pleasant Street has an empty space that's been unoccupied for about four years. And if you go and walk around North Hampton, you'll also see empty storefronts on the ground floor. And there are some new mixed-use buildings along Pleasant Street as Pleasant Street goes south towards Poly Oak and South Hadley. And some of those buildings also have empty first-floor spaces. Those are new mixed-use buildings with empty first-floor spaces. So I feel like we need to be realistic in terms of how much retail and commercial space we can actually occupy. And when you talk to Gabrielle Gould about this, she admits that it's hard to fill the retail spaces in downtown Amherst. She's doing a good job. She's got a couple of new retail businesses going in, but it is very hard to fill those spaces. So I just want to encourage you to walk around our downtown, walk around North Hampton, and see what you see and think about that before you come back and vote next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
So I appreciate what Chris Brestrop just said about, take a look around because we don't think that, you know, right now, it looks like, you know, retail space is hard to fill. We may not be able to fill it. I think the. I think the biggest issue I have with a lot of these zoning changes and about some other statements about things that we've changed in downtown is don't pour Kool-Aid down my leg and tell me it's raining. Because I distinctly remember, and I'm not pointing fingers, I just when we voted to get rid of the parking on the North Common, I listened to Gabrielle Gould, I listened to Evan. You know, I respect both of them, and I listen to them tell me, you know, even, you know, Steve, that we don't, we don't want to encourage cars. We don't, we don't want cars downtown. And, you know, we really need to discourage it and we don't need the parking. I'm not imagining that. That's what I heard. And, you know, when I argued that we need parking, we need it for businesses, we need it for the Amherst Cinema, you know, and I said, you can't just make cars go away by waving your wand. We need to put money into transportation, otherwise people from out of town can't come to things that we have for the arts downtown. I was dismissed. I didn't even get an answer. I find it really, really difficult to have these same people tell me now how much we need parking and that needs to be centralized. I think that I would, I would be able to work way more with people if they were honest. If in the original part of this, people said, you know what, I think we need centralized parking. It would have been easier. And I think that someone telling me, look, I don't think we can, I don't think we can really do a whole heck of a lot for retail downtown. Maybe we need to look at other things for destination. Let's build apartments. That would be way easier than trying to sell me on a mixed use building that's only thirty percent when really what we're saying is we want apartment buildings downtown. And, you know, I'm not going to vote to support this at thirty percent. I think that we need to start being really honest with what we think we need here. Thanks.
Alyssa Brewer.
So to not repeat, but and I found this to be one of our most productive deliberations ever on the town council in terms of why people are seeing this through a variety of different lenses is, you know, reflecting back to history. No one thought that a mixed use building meant you could put an ATM in and called it mixed use. Like, that was not anyone's prediction of reality. And so that is one of the reasons I am compelled by the idea that this is a great first step and that maybe in the future we could increase the amount. We should not be happy with the idea that people would possibly be using the perfect and enemy of the good in order to prevent residences from being built downtown. I know that there are people who say we don't need any more residences downtown, and if this is one way they can attack that, fine, but we should not be doing that because we, I believe, as a community, through the master plan process and ever since, have agreed that we do need additional residences downtown. I also want to make sure we're being realistic about the tiny shops that get brought up to us every so often. Thorne's Marketplace was obviously in a very unique position, given its former life as a department store. And we need to be realistic that the tiny shops we had in the carriage shops are not going to magically come back if we require a higher percentage of retail. I've actually had people say, well, if you required retail, then we could have more of those tiny shops like the carriage. No. The reason those tiny shops are no longer there is because they weren't paying anything near market rate rent because the space wasn't updated in many years and because they couldn't pay more anyway, given the amount of business they were doing. So that is a model we can't somehow magically replicate by requiring additional percentage of retail on the first floor. So I appreciate all the different numbers this has gone through, the idea of public facing space, the way the side streets work, the way multiple levels work. There are a lot of different components to this, but I do feel like I will be able to support this next week as being a good first step toward doing the things we say we value and just putting an ATM in an apartment building is not mixed use. And requiring forty, fifty, or sixty percent is not magically going to get us retail space we don't have now.
Kathy?
You have your hand up, Lynn, too.
No, I've spoken on once already, so go ahead.
So I hope I was clear that I am, I am for putting something on the books. I think this is quite urgently needed. And Steve's comment on, you know, the big downtown areas, not that Amherst has any big downtown areas. When I think of it, we have some small streets and that's our downtown. But in a five-story building with four upper floors, talking about forty percent of the first floor is not going overboard. And when we say the wisdom of the planning staff, I was in the room when I heard Chris's staff say forty seems about right. It's the sweet spot. And then somewhere between July and October, it slid to thirty. And I read the minutes of CRC and saw that there was a discussion added about thirty and that could we count some things on other floors? There's nothing that stops a creative building from putting a rooftop bar in if they want. This is a minimum. It's not a maximum. So we don't have to worry about that if that's a good idea. And the other point I want to make about the up here in North Square, one of my husband's best friends growing up was, his father was in major reach business running in the big New York City. And when he heard that the model was one entity owned all the apartments and another entity owned all the commercial space, he said, that's never going to work because one of the ways you enliven and bring people in is you can hold rent a little bit lower on the retail commercial space and cross subsidize it because that's what makes people want to live in those apartment buildings, that there's something downstairs to go to. So if you can't cross subsidize, it's a business model that's very difficult to work with because new buildings are expensive. I don't disagree with what Alyssa said, that an old crumbly building that you're paying rent in, it's unlikely the new place is going to give you anywhere close to that rent. So so I, I think we are talking about, is it thirty or is it forty? And otherwise, there's some solid stuff in this proposal. And the last thing I want to do is, I like Gabrielle's, you know, what would she say? Look to the future? We've got towns that we can look to Dartmouth, Burlington, which said, we want a different pathway forward. It didn't happen, Evan. It didn't happen magically because the market just, I don't believe markets just do this for you. I believe you've got to have a vision and someone pushing in it. They had a planning director up in Burlington that worked with businesses, got the university to put in some money. So I love the idea, Chris, that the next step is some streetscape working, worrying, you know, like how much, if, if in the different zones, what, what could go with this? And putting together that package is what we were asking for early. So if this is a good first step, I think we should make it, but I don't think people should think that thirty is good enough. It's forty.
Kathy, please wrap up.
I will.
Okay. Okay. Chris, actually, Mandy, Joe, Chris, or Nate, did you have a comment in response to other comments?
I did, but I think Chris and Nate will, will cover it, so I'd like them to go first.
Okay, Chris.
Just to have a brief comment, which is to say that the forty percent went to thirty percent because we disallowed the ability to use some of the common space. And so if all of a sudden you're taking away an opportunity for somebody to add to their to make it up to forty percent, then it makes sense to make the number lower. And maybe thirty isn't the right number. Maybe it should be thirty-three or thirty-five, but it should be lower than forty percent if you're taking away the common space. Thanks.
Nate, did you want to add to that?
Sure, I was going to share my screen with an illustration. You know, in Boston, they're they also kind of use the floor plan and color code it for uses. And so in this example, this is an example from Boston. The pink is retail. The yellow could be residential or parking. In this case, it's parking. And the blue is all common space. So previously, everything that is in blue or gray, however it's, whatever it looks like, that counted as part or could be counted as part of the forty percent. And now that whole area is excluded as part of the thirty percent. So someone couldn't come in and say that half of this lobby here or all this area here counts towards the retail or non-residential space. And so by taking that out of the equation, really, the thirty percent are these active spaces that are shown in, you know, pink or magenta or whatever it looks like. So we're really refining that. So I think, you know, whether we left it as forty percent and didn't define common space, which would be difficult for the permit granting authority or the building commissioner to interpret because, you know, how much, how do you prorate common space? Is it based on some square footage? Is it based on a percentage of overall building? So excluding common space really clarified that that percentage calculation. And so that's why thirty percent made sense because we're now excluding all of those areas that were, you know, could somehow maybe be part of the percentage calculation before.
Dorothy?
I feel like I've been in a thousand discussions of this, but every time it's just a little bit different. So I'd like to ask Chris and Nate again, what was so difficult to add the common and public spaces with this so that we could have had a complete bylaw? Because I would feel so much better. I really appreciate, I understand your distinctions that you've been making, how you redefined space. It makes a lot more sense. But I still don't get why we go through all this stuff and yet we haven't done it. And then when I say, well, let's bring up that public spacing, say, well, there's other more important things to do. It's like, you know, the tail of the dog, but let's do the whole thing together. And then we could all be happy and we could pass it. That's my suggestion, but there may be a reason that I don't remember as to why we can't do that.
Chris or Nate?
I guess, Dorothy, can you repeat the question? Is it, why can't we, you know, what's the, why not the common space? Are you talking about outdoor public space? I'm not sure what.
No, I'm talking about the outdoor public space that was in the original motion. I remember reading it and saying, yes, yes, that's good. We've been talking about that. And, and you had, you had a lot of pictures and drawings of things, and then they all disappeared. And everything kind of changed around so that it gets, it's really hard to know where you are half the time. Why can't we have that? What holds up that we can't add that to this?
Sure.
Have a complete bylaw?
Yeah, I think the, you know, Chris mentioned that this is a use classification and not a district. So typically, we, we the dimensional standards are district wide, not by uses. And so, you know, so having some open space requirements, some setbacks based on the use of a building and not the district is inconsistent with the zoning bylaw. So, you know, if we say there's open space for a mixed use building, that wouldn't be for any, you know, if there's just an office building, they wouldn't have those open space requirements. So the preference is to have it on a district wide, you know, standards. And so that's something we're doing with, you know, there's capital money for a consultant to look at, you know, zoning and design standards in the downtown. So that's something that would be happening in the coming year. I think it's also important, too, that the planning board through the site planner review criteria in the bylaw can regulate those public spaces now. And so without, there's already standards and conditions in the bylaw in eleven point two four and with the zoning board of appeal. So there's the ability to regulate some of that space now. And so staff realize there is the ability in now to do that, and it can be further refined by zoning amendments, but it really has to do with not having dimensional standards tied to a use. It's tied to a district.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? I want to echo what Alyssa said earlier. This has been a very informative and rich conversation, and I want to thank all the people that have spent all the time in this thoughtful process. We will return to this one next week. So we are going to go on to next one. Next one is the official zoning map, map fourteen A parcel thirty-three rezoning North Prospect Street Amendment to Article Two zoning districts and Article Three use regulations. Chris?
This is another one that Nate will present. He'll give the initial presentation and then we'll all be here to answer questions. Thank you.
Sure. Are we, are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
The that's visible, similar format as the previous presentation, a quick timeline. You know, this was brought forward on May twenty-fourth, and it was referred to the planning board in CRC. And at that time, it was a rezoning of the parcel for parking. There was a public hearing on July seventh by the planning board. It was continued you know, in August, September, and then into October. The CRC held, started a hearing on July thirteenth, and that was also continued. Through those, that hearing process and discussions with staff, in October, the bylaw, the suggestion was changed. It was still within scope to recommend an overlay zoning amendment as opposed to rezoning the property in its entirety. And so the CRC held a new public hearing on October twenty-sixth, and the planning board voted four to one on November third to recommend the current version. November sixteenth, the CRC voted four to one to recommend it. And on November seventeenth, it was reviewed by GOL. So the initial amendment sought to rezone the property from RG to BG. So that would, that would mean that any uses allowed in the BG could happen. It wouldn't necessarily restrict just a parking garage. It could be anything in the future. Staff, through consultation with KP Law, determined that an overlay zoning district was within scope and applicable. And the overlay district will only allow a parking facility. So any other use that's not allowed in the zoning district and the RG is not allowed. It only applies to a parking facility in an overlay district, you know, is meant to deal with a unique situation. So it can have its own dimensional regulations, standards and conditions and requirements for permitting. And so this is an instance where an overlay zone can work really well. There was, you know, a lot of public comment concerned with this proposal in terms of impact to the neighborhood, traffic, design of the facility and the need for a garage. And so, you know, I think that the overlay tries to address some of these concerns. There was quite a bit of opposition by residents of the neighborhood. And then at the same time, many businesses, we heard, support a centralized parking, destination parking. The, you know, the overlay does not commit the town to build a garage. It, it provides an opportunity for an applicant to propose a garage that then go through permitting. And then it would be on the applicant to determine, you know, engineering studies, you know, what's, what are the impacts? Now it'd be reviewed through permitting. So, you know, the zoning only applies to this one parcel, the overlay. It doesn't change the underlying zoning. It only allows a public or private parking garage by site planner view that's currently allowed in the bylaw. It does not commit the town to build a garage. It responds to the public comments with some design standards and conditions. It requires an applicant to provide engineering reports and traffic data. And it also has some minimum standards, you know, a forty-foot height to the top of the wall above the parking deck is consistent with the RG zoning district, a setback of fifteen feet with vegetative screening and trees. I'll go through the bylaw in a minute. One thing that, you know, also would happen is the zoning is the first step, and then the next step would be for the town to issue a request for proposals. And so in the request for proposals, a lot of the concerns that were that were discussed could be included in the request for proposals. So for instance, to have the height of the stair tower be away from the street. That's something that zoning wouldn't typically regulate in such detail, but that's something that could happen through the request for proposals. So I think, you know, we've taken notes on all of those comments, and that's something that could be incorporated in the next phase if this were to move forward. And so, you know, certain design standards and certain very specific criteria could be in a request for a proposal. It's not typical in zoning. So here's the bylaw. This was, you know, as voted by GOL. So it affects zoning too. This would be a special district in the bylaw. It would be the parking facility district. And it would apply only to the parcel fourteen A thirty-three on North Prospect Street. You know, its purpose is to allow the development of a public or private parking facility in an area that is, you know, proximal to the downtown. So it's really just one property off of one of the main commercial corridors in town. In applicability here, we say that the requirements of the underlying zoning shall apply unless it's replaced and modified herein. So, you know, Article Six, Seven, and Eight will apply to the parking facility. That's, you know, parking standards, signage, landscaping, unless there's additional criteria spelled out in this bylaw. So, you know, any provision of the bylaw applies unless it's modified in this overlay. You know, as I mentioned, it's a You know, as I mentioned, it's a it's only a public or private parking lot or parking garage would be allowed. It has its own dimensional standards, so there's no minimum lot area or minimum frontage, uh, because it's an overlay. Uh, there's a fifteen-foot requirement that, um, you know, of setback on North Prospect Street that a structure or parking lot be setback from the street. Um, the side or rear setbacks is five feet from the property line, um, abutting a residential use in a residential district. Otherwise, there's no setback required. Um, the maximum building coverage is ninety percent and lot coverage is ninety-five percent. Currently, the lot is ninety-seven percent covered in parking and pavement. So it's almost a hundred percent a parking lot. The height is forty feet. And you know, this current phrase, this next phrase measured as the vertical distance from the average finished grade on the street uh, side of the structure to the highest point of the parking structure. That vertical distance of the average grade is the standard language used to measure height in the bylaw. So we measure it from the North Prospect Street side. Uh, it's forty feet to the highest um, point on that structure, whether that's a parapet wall above the uppermost parking direct uh, deck or, you know, some screening or something. So it's not, you know, you know, it's not to the parking deck, it's to a wall above that. You know, parking structure doesn't have a consistent floor plan or floor level. It it's always you know, sloped. And so forty feet uh, as an absolute measurement is the easiest way to to cap a height, to measure a height. So this actually is about a three-story garage. If there's about twelve feet per level, then with a four-foot wall on top of the third level, that's about forty feet. So really, forty feet is a way to have an absolute measurement that, you know, if we set a three-story garage, for instance, and they had higher floors, it could actually be more than forty feet in height. Um, there are standards and conditions that shall be applied. And so it's not, um, you know, it's not, uh, it's a mandatory um, that the designer view principles in the bylaw be applied, that design and landscape standards be applied, and that disciple and review criteria be applied. And that's not a may, it's a shell. So, um, you know, that's important for the permit granting authority and for the applicants to know that they're going to be going through that process. Um, and there's a number of standards and conditions here. Uh, one is that the maximum number of parking spaces uh, would be approved after analysis of current um, and future traffic conditions. And this would, you know, be provided through engineering studies and professional studies um, at the applicant's cost and reviewed by the permit granting authority, and it could be peer reviewed again at the applicant's cost. And so we're really putting the onus on an applicant to determine, you know, what the impacts are based on the size of the structure that could be proposed. The next three point two four one, sorry about that keeps jumping the screen, uh, shall be designed to be compatible with the adjacent neighborhood in downtown. And so this provides the permit granting authority the ability to look at materials, scale, size, uh, stepbacks, setbacks, uh, and 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 really work with an applicant to shape the the design of of the structure. Um, we're saying the parking structure shall be designed and or facade treatments shall be applied to minimize visibility of cars parked inside the facility from North Prospect Street. And so, uh, you know, this means that there could be screening, there could be um, meditation, there could be artwork. Uh, there's a number of ways that this could be satisfied, but it's, you know, it's allowing, again, the permit granting authority and the applicant to truly make uh, make something that's compatible with the neighborhood. Um, architectural details and materials shall be used to break down the scale of the parking structure facade. Again, this, you know, could be uh, stepping back of certain portions of the of the structure. It could be different materials, you know, columns, different vertical or horizontal elements. It's really then, um, again, something that will be worked out, uh, you know, later through permitting. This uh, three point two three four four, the grade and design of a parking um, access really is establishing the width of an aisle, you know, a one-way aisle would be twelve feet or two, um, would be a minimum of eighteen. Um, it, you know, it's saying that uh, we're trying to minimize curb cuts and, you know, one vehicle would have to be able to, you know, queue up um, on the property without blocking the sidewalk. So, you know, that fifteen-foot setback in the front also allows that, but this standard also reinforces that. You, you know, it's really trying to minimize cars that would be blocking the sidewalk. Uh, sustainable design objectives shall be incorporated into the design. And this is something that you know, could be discussed in terms of, um, is that adding multimodal transportation options? So adding more bike racks, electrical vehicle charging stations? Is it uh, solar? Is it, you know, using recycled materials? There's a number of of ways that this could be satisfied. Uh, the frontage zone, so that fifteen feet uh, need to be, needs to be heavily landscaped. Uh, and you know, trees have to be at least one story above grade at time of planting. So that means that, you know, it's a really a, a, you know, a twelve or fifteen-foot tall tree that would be planted that would then mature to a a greater height, uh, as well as low-level ground covers and other planting. So we're talking about a substantial planting in front. Um, we're requiring applicants to provide sidewalks or walkways to connect to the pedestrian paths outside of the property. We're not asking them to create a sidewalk that goes from this property to Main Street, but they have to make a connection to existing sidewalks or to the pedestrian routes. Uh, lighting should be installed. And, you know, it should be shielded, prevent light distribution onto o- other properties. One thing that was discussed is uh, this additional freestanding sign. Um, so we're having a provision that right now you can only have a twelve-square-foot sign in the R G district. So it's a very small sign. Um, so the the overlay is allowing an additional freestanding or projecting signs. It could be one or more signs that do not exceed fifty square feet for each sign or a combined total of a hundred square feet. All other parts of our article later, the bylaw shall apply. So that means it can't be backlit or L E D or, you know, moving lights or strobe lights, but we're giving an exception in terms of um, the size allowance. And then there's a requirement that a parking management operations and maintenance plan be submitted at time of application. Uh, that will list the number of parking spaces, um, and how they're broken down to different users, whether that's public, long-term business or permit holders, uh, the parking rates and fees, hours of operation, uh, safety measures, uh, enforcement operations, trash removal and storage, um, snow management, uh, the treatment of interior surfaces, stormwater management. So a lot of the management operations is really important and becomes critical to the s- the success of a parking facility. And so this is not an exhaustive list, but something that, you know, these nine um, pieces of the plan are required, uh, and the board could ask for more during permitting. And like I said, this would be, you know, this is the zoning uh, change would allow this and only this um, use on the property. So someone, even if someone wanted to put in a mixed-use building, that's not allowed. Um, and this overlay doesn't permit that. And the town would still retain ownership of the property.
Can you take your screen down now? Thank you. So let me just quickly go to uh, planning board report, Chris.
The planning board on on, it was actually on October twentieth that the planning board voted. They voted five to one with one member absent to recommend this article to town council. And they had actually met one, two, three, four, five. They met five different times on this article. So they really had a lot of discussion and they again took the public comment at most not all of these um, meetings. Thank you.
Mindy Jo?
Should we check to see if Doug wants to add anything?
I'm sorry. Doug, would you like to add anything to that report?
Well, probably not at this time, I suppose. I'll I'll wait. Unless this is my really best time to talk.
You have comments from the planning board? Please go ahead.
Okay, well, um, you know, we got a lot of public comment on this. Most of it uh, came from the local residents, residential owners. Um, we did request specifically that the business community show up at one of these meetings to express their support because at the first meeting, we only had the one of the two counselors who proposed the uh, amendment. And it was not clear the level of support for it. So we did get very strong business and business support and very strong residential opposition. We also got complaints that uh, we were only looking at that site and that we should be thinking about where other parking garages could be built downtown. And uh, it, the way the proposal came to us from council, we were asked to think about this one site. So it seemed outside of our purview to be thinking uh, more holistically about other sites in town. I guess the other thing I would say is that you know, I think the planning board, or at least I personally felt like this was not an an inappropriate place for a parking garage. It is sort of a border site between residential and downtown. So you know, partly because of the way it came to us uh, initiated from council, uh, we did not feel like we needed to stand in the way of de- of a decision about this. That in the end, it's a political decision about how the council wants to shape the future of the town. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Mindy Jo, C R C.
Thank you. This was referred by the council to CRC and the planning board on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, more than six months ago. As you heard, um, Chris and Doug indicate the planning board held five public hearings on this, starting July seventh and ending October twentieth. They continued it four times. CRC started its public hearing on July thirteenth. It continued that public hearing until August tenth. It closed the public hearing on August tenth while the planning board still had theirs open. In the meantime, it was told by the sponsors, counselors Ross and Ryan that they were working with the planning department to revise their proposal. The ninety-day deadline would pass for a vote from by the council from the state law requires the council vote within ninety days of the council's hearing being closed and CRC holds the council's hearing. And so because that ninety-day deadline would have passed, CRC noticed properly another public hearing, a further public hearing. I've been calling it on October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. That public hearing was continued until November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. So CRC actually held four public hearings on the proposal between two on the initial, two on the revised for a total of about seven and a half hours of public hearing. On a, on November sixteenth, CRC voted to recommend the council adopt the provisions, the proposed parking facility district by a vote of four in favor and one against. And the reasons and the discussion of those seven and a half hours of public hearing and the discussion that occurred after that are contained within the CRC report. I do ask um, that Lynn, you allow if the sponsors wish to, since this was originally brought by two counselor sponsors, that if they wish to, that they be able to speak prior to opening per public discussion.
Absolutely. Let me go to the G O L report. And George, let's deal with G O L first, and then I'll come back to you as one of the sponsors.
Thank you, Lynn. Um, G O L met on November seventeen. And the vote was three to zero with two absent to declare um, this zoning amendment to be clear, consistent, actionable. And the K P uh, law report on this particular zoning item is in your package.
Okay. Evan, would you like to start the comments or George?
I'm happy to start. Uh, yes, so um, Council Ryan and I brought this forward in May. As the first piece of the puzzle to move forward, the Destination Amherst Plan that had been presented to the town council over a year prior um, in January or February of twenty-twenty. Um, and we were interested in moving it forward um, and had identified the zoning as the first barrier. Um, and so I I want to be clear about a couple of things. Um, Nate Malloy had put together a memo that went to the planning department that outlined a little bit of the history of this site and noted that this site was identified for a parking structure in a nineteen seventy-seven study. It was again emphasized in a nineteen eighty-nine study. It was again looked at in a nineteen ninety study. And in the twenty nineteen Nelson Nygaard study, unrecommendation, I believe, strategy uh, eight B, perhaps it was, um, noted this site as quote, "The greatest potential for a parking deck or larger structure compared to many of the other sites." And so this site uh, has been studied quite a bit over literal decades. And so, um, i- i- it's not fair to say that other sites haven't been studied. It's not fair to say that this has been insufficiently studied. This has been studied over decades. And so, um, it was, it all culminated in the Destination Amherst Plan, and George and I looked to bring that forward. Uh, we originally brought forward a rezoning from R G to B G to create a potential for this parking structure. Um, and what we heard in the first public hearing that CRC held um, in July, I want to say thirteenth it was. Um, w- we heard a lot of real concerns from the residents. Um, and we took those to heart because we understood that putting a parking structure um, across the street for many people um, is something that people will have concerns about. And so we really listened to them and we tried to find ways to modify the proposal on to address those concerns. And one of the biggest concerns, as Nate mentioned, was um, well, what happens when this gets rezoned B G? Could something else be built there? Uh, B G allows five stories. Can can something five stories be built there? And we really listened to that and tried to modify the proposal in response. We looked at a whole bunch of alternatives. We looked at contract zoning for a while to see if that was a way to do it. It wasn't. Um, and then the planning department came forward with this idea of the overlay district. And George and I recognized that their proposal was better than the one that we had originally come forward with. Um, and so we worked with them and supported them in creating this overlay proposal. Uh, and I want to say that I I'm just really proud of that because I think that this is the way that the process is supposed to work. We came forward with it. W- we knew what we wanted. We had a vision. It was part of the Destination Amherst Plan. We we moved forward a zoning proposal that could help us meet that vision. We heard concerns, we took feedback, and we've fairly dramatically modified the proposal in response to those concerns and those feed and this feedback over the course of several months. And now have something that looks pretty different from what we brought to you back in May. And so this is an example of um, taking time deliberately thinking uh, about what we're doing, about being responsive to resident concerns and feedback and and being adaptable and being willing to compromise. And so I I'm really proud of the process that's happened over the course of very many months um, and taking into consideration resident input on this and modifying it in response. And I think that it's been a great process. Um, and I and I'm glad that we're at this point where we're now ready to consider at the council level. So I'll hand it over to George if he wants to add anything.
Please, George.
Yeah, um, I mean, you've heard a lot tonight about the importance of retail downtown. And we've had a long discussion about that um, in the previous uh, zoning amendment. Seems to me that the single one thing we could do as a council for the future of retail in our downtown is to build or at least to make it possible, just to create the possibility of a destination garage um, in our, in the center of our downtown. One that's strongly supported by our business community, one that has great interest in as a public-private partnership. Um, so I think this is, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to do something really important um, for the future of our town and for the future of retail, the creation of a destination parking garage. And all this does is make it possible. The second thing I want to echo Evan's comment about the process. This really shows how the process works. Um, it's taken months, and we started out in one direction, and then with the help of the planning department, um, we saw a better way, and they presented it. And so I hope my colleagues will take the time to look at how this overlay responds pretty much almost point by point to the concerns raised, legitimate concerns raised um, by the the nearby residents and the abutters, and and provides a whole host of conditions um, addressing this and and also parking management operations plan. This is a thing of beauty. I mean, it really is. Um, and I hope that it will support it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm going to go to council questions and comments. Dorothy?
I have a couple of things to say. Um, my first question is the fifteen-feet property line along the right-of-way. Okay, so the question is, is that right-of-way the sidewalk? Is the right-of-way the edge of the sidewalk, or is it the middle of the street? How many feet from the curb of the street? Uh, is it for the parking garage? That's number one. Number two, talking about making the structure compatible with the neighborhood, there is no way, there is no way you can make any parking structure compatible with a local historic district. Uh, you're not going to be having those wonderful um, eccentric uh, designs and features. Talk about the
Muted.
Muted.
I had my beautiful, wonderful oak blown down. I have replaced it by a fifteen to twenty foot tree. It is, and it cost me three or four hundred dollars to get that thing planted. It is a skinny stick. Fifty years from now, there will be a beautiful tree there. I have planted it for the future. Because I believe that beautiful things deserve to live and last, okay? But it's going to be fifteen years before that fifteen foot tree will give anything like the tree that it replaced. One of the problems that I see is that we, the public, I mean, as a counselor and the public. Kept thinking if we brought up problems with it, people would then act on it. And the question was, the place is the flawed place. Of course, a transitional space, it's an R G zone. If you want something transitional, you make it B L, and that would mean a small parking structure. The neighbor said they would accept that, but that was immediately discarded. So when the public comes again and again and again and says, not this place, there's a better place. They did not know that because this was presented to the planning board and the town council for one place only. That there was nobody in the whole town who was going to say, I will look at another place. That the rules forbid even looking at another place. So wasted time because we thought there was a logical process. I see this process as seriously flawed if you can't look to see at another place. And there's a reason that year after year, the place is brought up and it wasn't done because it's not a good place. It's ruinous to the adjoining residential neighborhood. So I guess it's true. Lots of people, including the sponsors, have put in a lot of work, all right? And I trust their motives were being for the idea that it was for the better of the town. But this process. Is not working if only what the words that are presented before you can be looked at. And no other reasonable place can even be considered. So the vision, logic have been ignored completely. And if this is going to be, it will be a terrible miscarriage of justice. And it will be a misuse of council time and of the public's participation in what is supposed to be a democratic town council. Thank you.
Kathy.
I, as I had texted Lynn on, could we just postpone this until next week? Because one of my concerns is when we first voted on this lot, it was about eleven thirty at night and I was brain dead. I didn't even know what I was voting on. But so we're, we're partway into it, so I will make my comments. But I want you to know, I did write a longer memo and I can't submit it. So I'm going to do as much as I can to summarize this. The proposed parking garage assumes two, three things without any evidence. One is this is the only and the best place. Second, that we have to do an overlay zone before we can do any evaluation. And third, that there are going to be private developers interested in building a garage on this existing site. On a public-owned land where there will be a net gain in short-term spaces. So let me just talk about each of those. The lot is only two-thirds of an acre. When we did the earlier study, it was an acre that we looked at. So Arrow Street did a schematic design for us in nineteen ninety. It would have been two hundred and fifty spaces, a nice-sized garage. Two and a, two and a half stories. They had an acre to work with, not two-thirds of an acre. If I take this down in that size, we're at maybe a hundred and sixty-five spaces. There are seventy-two spaces in the lot now. So we're not getting a big net gain. And the Arrow Street proposal, as well as what we heard from Nelson Nygaard, said. To make this work for a private developer or anyone, a lot of them would have to be long-term. In the Arrow Street, more than half were long-term. If we half those amounts, we lose our short-term space. We don't have even the seventy-two we have. So all this thinking of this mythic garage. That more people can come, people in the movies can come. If all the spaces are rented out long-term to make the economics work, we won't have that. The further part of the quote that Evan did not read on the North Street spot. It said, however, as mentioned, access in and out of the lot is constrained by poor right-of-way on North Pleasant Street. Negotiating with property owner to improve access as needed. This has always been the problem with that site. And they talked about the Amity Street site. We could talk to Amherst College. Behind Boltwood Inn is a great place. There is already a parking lot there, a garage there. We wouldn't see it. It's on a bigger lot size. So the fact that we're not looking at more sites, and Nate said it for us, we didn't ask them to, so they didn't. So the right question would have been from the council is can you do an assessment of where we might put a garage? How big it could be? And what's the cost-benefit analysis? We paid four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for this six, two, sixty-six percent of an acre. We bought this land and we're talking about giving it to a private developer to run a garage for us, build it. I know, I only get three minutes, but I'm not proposing it. So I'm going to take one more second so people can hear. Because I can't give you my written comments. Is that if we do an R F P like we did for D P W. And no one comes to our party and no one does our term, we've wasted a huge amount of time that we could be focusing on. Let's go negotiate with, it's Amherst College benefit to have a parking garage for big events too. I think we might need a destination, but let's look at other places. This is not the lot that nineteen ninety looked at. It's two-thirds of an acre. It's not an acre, and that makes a huge difference. We're not going to get the garage that everyone is envisioning, that all their customers can stay in. It's just not going to be big enough. Nelson.
Kathy.
Study said forty thousand dollars.
She's exceeded her time.
I have exceeded my time, but you all didn't have time limits.
They were presenters. Andy.
Yeah, first of all, I want to just come back to emphasize that. We're voting as a zoning proposal. We're not voting to approve a garage that a future council. Will have the opportunity to address a number of the issues, including looking at other sites that might be available. Because we're not committing anybody to build a garage on the site. We're just making it possible for people to build a site. Second thing, I just want to, I think that everybody knows, so I don't have to go into it. But, you know, we are in a real revenue crisis in town. And our revenue is so dependent on property tax. And unless state law changes substantially. We're going to remain dependent on property tax. And the only place where we can get property tax without affecting. Residential neighborhoods is to rely on central business district and village centers in the central business district. Being a primary one. And we've been continuously advised that we really need to make. Destination possible and destination means number of other towns. In January, we received a presentation from Amherst Cinema that included a map showing where people came from to attend the cinema. And they made the point very strongly that they were scattered all over Western Massachusetts, since it's one of the few art cinemas. And the biggest complaint that they received from patrons is inability to find parking places. And the other two locations that we've heard a lot about is the Jones Library and the Drake. All proximate to where those parking garages to be built. The question of whether there, it would be turned over to short to long-term parking. If the bid is involved, I have questioned whether the bid would be interested in finding. Investors or investing itself through its foundation in a garage that isn't going to serve the purposes of the bid. And if that was a needed proposal to be added, that could be added at a later date. The question of other locations, the, you know, there was a comment that gee, the slot is quite, isn't quite as big enough as it should be. But why not consider the Boltwood lot across from the library and next to the cinema? That's a heck of a lot smaller, so that isn't going to be a possible location. And you want to be proximate to those three locations that I may have referenced earlier. And a couple of other things just to note, one is that. I am sympathetic to it being a residence transition zone, and that's always difficult. But residence transition zones are always going to exist somewhere in a town like Amherst. And the last thing that I want to say is that I think we could cut. Well, I'll save it and say it next week then.
Thank you. Sorry. I just want to ask the question and make sure I understood carefully. The way you are now proposing that this be zoned. Means it cannot be used for anything else than a parking garage. And I would like to better understand why that change was made.
So sure, the, so right now it's an, it's a residential zoning district. It's general residence and it's a town-owned property. So really the town has control of what could happen. But if, for instance, as the original amendment was proposed, this was rezoned to B G. And at some point, the town disposed of the property. Whether the intention was to build a garage, if a garage was built and then it was torn down, it's a B G property. So it could have a five-story building in B G uses. An overlay district doesn't affect the underlying zoning. So it remains R G, general residence. And the overlay in it, it says that it only applies, it only allows. Two uses, a public parking garage or facility or a private parking garage or facility. So because the overlay specifies that those are the only uses allowed in the overlay, that's all that could be built with this overlay. So, you know, if this zoning amendment were passed and then the town went out and said, had an R F P for a mixed-use building. That still wouldn't be allowed because the overlay doesn't allow it and the underlying zoning doesn't allow it. And so the overlay is really specific to a parking facility. It's already defined in the zoning bylaw as a certain use category. So it really is just those specific uses, a parking lot or a parking facility.
I have other questions, but I'll wait. Mindy Jo.
I could further answer your question, but I don't want to take it to take away from my three minutes. May I be able to answer the question and then also get my three minutes?
Yep.
Thank you. So whatever can be built under R G will always be able to be built on that lot. On R G because the R G zoning still applies. So if the town wants a house built. It can do that. If the town wants an apartment complex built that complies with the R G zoning. It could put out for that because the R G zoning is still underlying. The only thing this overlay does is add the possibility of a parking facility with different. Different dimensional regulations than what R G does. So the R G zoning still applies for any other use. The overlay changes those regulations for a parking facility use. So that, that's a further answer to the question. And now I'll go to what I actually wanted to say. Which is. This is planning for the future. We. I've always supported centralized parking. This helps us potentially achieve centralized parking. It's allows for the possibility of a garage in case a garage is needed. So the town can be ready. It helps us work towards our vision. It helps us plan for that vision. If we want to expand outdoor dining and re-envision the use of other parts of our public ways by removing parking on. Say, North Pleasant Street to expand outdoor dining, we may need parking other places. I don't want a lot of surface lots to make that up. I want centralized parking for that. I think it's pie in the sky to say, work with Amherst College. And sure, they'll build something for the town to use. Or sure, Bank of America allow us to build a garage on their lot. We own this lot. That's one of the benefits of trying to do it at this lot because we control it. Which brings me to the next part, which is. We can change this. It doesn't mean it'll be built because we don't know whether it's financially feasible to. That's what Nelson Nygaard said. It may or may not be financially feasible. This allows for the possibility, allows someone else other than the town to do those studies. So that the town doesn't incur the costs of doing those studies of determining the financial feasibility. We incur the costs of coming up with an R F P. And so my suggestion, maybe, I'm thinking about this, is whether we could ask the manager or direct the manager that. If an R F P is going to be sent out, that the council see that R F P and be able to comment on that R F P before it goes out. Because that's where you can control things like how many of those spots will be long-term? How many will be short-term? How many will be long-term leased versus long-term parking or anything like that? We could ask to see that R F P before it goes out. As part of a motion or something, I'm sure something like that could be figured out to help us. With what Nate was talking about in terms of what that R F P looks like, the council could have potentially some say on that. If we think about a way to ask the manager to do that. And that would be another way of controlling some of the concerns we've heard tonight about. Well, we're not going to get more spaces. Well, we don't know until we know what can go up there because. You know, the planning department showed us the potential for two hundred and fifty spots. Or two hundred and thirty spots or two hundred and ten. It was somewhere in the two hundreds. So that's. That's, we don't know that until studies are done. And one way of creating this possibility is to have someone else pay for those studies. Through us sending out an R F P, which seems to be good use of town money or not use of town money because someone else is going to do it for us.
Thank you. Sarah.
So here's something that I struggle with, which is when we talked about parking on the North Common. Bid came and said, well, you know, there are a lot of businesses that would like to keep that parking. But, you know, we really think that we need the beautification and we need the meeting space and we'd really like a place for people to sit. And that's really important. And, you know, we really want to get away from cars. And then. I mean, I brought up, in that discussion, I brought up all of the talking points that Mandy Jo just said. I brought up all the things that Evan just said, and I was disregarded. When the head of the Amherst Cinema came before us and said she, she didn't want it to be gone. There was no response. There was no response. And now you want to, you want to put centralized parking. And yeah, probably some kind of parking where everybody could be would be a great idea. But now you're telling me how much we need it when that's what I argued. And there was like, eh, maybe not. I don't understand that. And then you're going to ask me later to vote for all of these apartment buildings downtown to not have really any parking there. And you're going to tell me that students don't have cars and we want to get away from that. The inconsistency bothers me. It really is upsetting and it makes me not trust what people really want or what they're telling me. When you give me inconsistent reasons, I begin to doubt that I don't even know what you ultimately want. And I also think that, that, you know. I don't think that we can just disregard what people in a neighborhood necessarily are. Are saying. When I just don't think the zoning is right. I mean, I don't think the zoning is right there. And I won't vote for it. And I have, you know. Especially when we found out that all you mass parking, all of their lots are completely full. When we know that all the towns reserve parking. Permits that we have are full. It doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I. I just want people to be honest about what exactly it is that they want all the way through.
I'm going to skip over Kathy and Evan and go to Alyssa.
Who clearly wasn't ready to unmute. Sorry about that. So. I have a combination of comments and a final question. So. This discussion has been extremely unpleasant. Because there's a lot of motives being thrown around and I'm struggling a lot with that. I also don't know why town counselors, both tonight and other nights, are so willing to say, they didn't even know what they were voting on. This is like not a helpful thing to say, in my opinion. I also don't know why town counselors believe it's appropriate to suggest that neighbors need to attend our meeting to quote. Help stop the Thanksgiving coup. This also does not feel like an effective way to collegially perform our town council duties. I also remain frustrated that we've been unable to have town hall staff make clear. Whether or not we can actually add to the Boltwood Garage, given current zoning. It's obviously mentioned in, given current standards. Obviously, that's mentioned in the reports too, and everybody keeps asking about that. And when I say everybody, I mean, for over a decade, people in elected office, way before town council, way before the current planning board have been saying. Do we know if we can actually add to that garage or not? Yes, it made sense at the time, but do we know if that's currently possible? Yes, it made sense at the time, but do we know if that's currently possible? No one ever has the answer to that question. We also never seem to have an answer to a question. It was just something that did come up in representative town meeting in the past. People are acting as though we've never talked about the parking lot that's across from the library and next to Amherst Cinema. We've talked about that at length. Please don't we pretend we haven't talked about that. We were told very clearly at representative town meeting that there's a legal requirement that the Amherst Academy lot cannot be turned into a parking garage. If that's no longer true, then we need to know that absolutely 100%. I get the frustration people have when they see these other spaces and they don't know why we haven't done that. Because I don't know why we haven't done it either. When elected officials have been asking about it for a long time. But at the same time, one of the reasons we struggle with parking downtown is this push pull between the thousand plus residents who participated in the development of a master plan who want density downtown. I know there are people who don't want density downtown, but our community wants density downtown. And therefore representative town meeting approved that municipal parking district. That meant those buildings did not need to provide parking. That wasn't town hall doing it on whim. That wasn't this town council representative town meeting followed through on the master plan by doing that. So my question in all of this is following up on what Mandy Jo said about possibly influencing the RFP. If we don't, like if the town council does enough, like this passes and a future town council isn't engaged in the RFP at all, which would be pretty typical, actually, that the town council wouldn't be engaged in that. Is it possible for the permit granting authority to say no? If the proposal that the te- that the developer makes is to offer only a handful of public spaces and the rest for their tenants in the municipal parking district? I get that it says you have to explain that in your application, but is it okay to say no if you don't like the balance they provide? Or would that have to be something that would have to be handled in the RFP?
Chris, I think see your hand going up on that one.
I think there are two different things that we're talking about here. One is what, um, RFP, when we put out an RFP, we get responses and then we form a committee and we examine the responses and the committee chooses, uh, a developer to develop the property. And that's different from a board or, uh, zoning board of appeals or the planning board, um, actually going through the process of granting a permit for this. So there are two different, um, levels of examination. And I would think that Alyssa's questions would be answered by the group that would choose the developer. Um, we would be very specific in our RFP and then the group that would choose the developer would choose based on the criteria that are in the RFP. And the zoning board or the planning board, whichever one it turns out to be, would evaluate the proposal itself based on the criteria that were um, listed in the RFP. So you know, there are two different processes, I guess is what I'm saying. And both of those groups would look at what the town wants and make sure that we get what the town wants.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, so. Armin?
I said you've not spoken on this one.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll just start off with I support this and I've obviously followed all of the various iterations. You know, again, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I think that this is really a very good solution to, you know, to this issue. So as has been said, that this does not bring us a parking garage. This only brings us the possibility of a garage. Um, I would not want to personally, um, I would not be excited about the prospect of living next door to a parking garage, but I also would not be excited about the prospect of living next to a surface parking lot. So I think the, um, maybe the silver lining in this is that actually well-designed parking garages can be better neighbors than surface parking lots. So if nothing happens on that site, what you see is what we get, basically a deteriorated surface parking lot with really zero barriers between people that use that parking lot and, um, you know, the neighborhood that's the, the Prospect Street. What you would get if something is built is the part, the possibility of screening and actually developing a really beautiful screen along Prospect Street. Parking garages of today are not the parking garages of my youth, which were basically concrete monstrosities. There are really beautiful parking garages that you may have walked by that you don't even know are parking garages. So the, the also there's a lot of kicking the can over, you know, let's kick the can over to that property or to this property. Those properties have neighbors also, the, the property next to, um, behind the, um, I can't even think of the name of the bank, across the street from the, you know, the Jones Library. There's people that live around there also. There's people that live around the Boltwood Garage. So all of these areas have neighbors also. So they haven't spoken yet because that's, it's not that the, the project's not in their backyard yet. So we have to keep that in mind. I completely agree that there's lots of problems with this becoming a garage. The narrow access off of North Pleasant, the narrow access off of, 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 um, North Prospect. But the conversation can't even begin until we take this step here. So I support this.
Um, okay, I'm going to go back around Kathy.
Um, I, you know, to, to Steve's point about the narrow access points, Janet Keller earlier mentioned that she wasn't able to upload photos, but she actually took a bunch of photos. So if there's a way I could get them into the record, maybe I can find out later so people can see what we're talking about. It's, narrow is an understatement unless we remove all the cars that currently park along the street, um, which would mean we lose the street parking in addition to the 72. Um, I don't buy the argument, I'm an economist. I don't buy the argument that we can't do some cost benefit assessment of this lot without, before we do a zoning overlay or before we do a zoning over on several, because I can do the math and I would want to know that, um, a seven million plus garage, and I'm just doing the 40,000 times spaces, could be built by a developer who probably wants to at least break even and still have short-term spaces where we could come and go, so we would get that kind of access and we wouldn't be charged a lot of money for those spaces. The town is giving up something we paid for almost $500,000 for plus annual revenue. And I'm assuming we're not going to get the revenue from the garage. So I would want to know those terms and I want a, a stronger answer to Alyssa's questions because we turn it down if we didn't like the answers to the RFP. Um, and why not? The Amity Lot wasn't supposed to be just the one Amity Lot in Nelson I guard. It's take a look at it combined with Bank America, compound with the P people's bank lot. It was saying, talk to those private groups central. It has better access points. And if we could do that, it's a larger space. So why wouldn't we look at two or three at the same time? Why would we look at only one? And that's why I'm questioning this. It's just not logical to me to approach it this way. Um, I don't want to be accused of streamlining it for a particular use. I don't think that's what we're doing, but it feels like it. And my trust factor is if I can do the math and start to question whether this really works, so could the smart people, I, I think what Nate has done in this overlay is brilliant. And the same set of minds could look at the last study that was done. It was extremely thorough, the 1991. It did schematic design, showed you how much spot and you could do a, a, a what if for this garage for how many spaces? And I think we should be doing that, um, before we, uh, turn ourselves into pretzels and say, this is the one and only place in town. We should, we should be thinking this through and we should be thinking it through carefully. That's all I'm asking for, to not choose just one place, presume it's the best and make some assumptions that I think the businesses think it's a bigger garage. They're thinking of North Hampton. It's not going to be the North Hampton size. They're not going to get the destination. We need to be honest about this.
Evan?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, my name has been invoked twice about being inconsistent in my approach to parking. So I felt that I should respond to that. Um, so on January 26, 2020, I released a pretty long document outlining some of my priorities um, for that year and my remaining time on the council. One of which was the North Common renovation and a renovation that removed paved parking. And another on that list was also a new parking garage. And in my discussion in that article about the North Common, I said, quote, "Let's move forward with a new parking facility to increase parking spaces at a centralized location and move forward with a design for the North Common that removes the paved parking from our historic town common." So I don't believe that I was ever inconsistent on this. I have always advocated for, yes, we need more parking in our downtown to support our local businesses. No, I don't believe the North Common lot is the right space for that. And that has to do with my vision for how we utilize our public spaces. Now I published that in January 2020. That was prior to COVID. My belief in this has actually only strengthened since COVID because what we've seen is we had to move so much of our dining outdoors during COVID and people really like it. And we reclaimed a lot of parking spaces on the street for outdoor dining. And we're hearing from folks that they want to see that continue even once we are out of this pandemic. And that means that we are going to need to compensate for that loss of spaces somewhere else. And so I don't think I've been inconsistent in my approach to parking. I've never said we need to get rid of cars downtown. It'd be great, it's not realistic. I would like us to see invest in more bike infrastructure and more, um, public transportation, but I know there's always going to be a demand for cars. But I think we really need to think about how we're using our public spaces and how we can, um, use centralized parking so that we can reclaim some of our public spaces like the North Common, like our streetscape for outdoor dining, but still be able to meet the parking demand for our downtown. And I also want to say that I don't think that my vote on the North Common disregarded the concerns of businesses because in my, in, eh, how I look at it is we're going to be creating new parking spaces elsewhere, ideally in a centralized location like this. And so I, I'm here because I think that I'm listening to the business community. Um, and I'm reconciling that with, with my vision for the town. And we have heard from the business community on this. We heard from the Amherst Cinema. We heard from, uh, an AV company that's working on the Drake. We heard from AJ Hastings. We heard from Rossif, the owner of Beast or 63. We heard from Amherst Books, Laughing Dog Bicycles. We heard from Clays, Glaze Donut Shop, Amherst Copying Design. We also heard from the Library Board of Trustees and the Library Director who all supported a parking structure at this site because they saw it as a good investment for our downtown. And so I think that we should be responsive to them, but I don't think the fact that I'm being responsive in this instance, even as I supported the North Common renovation, means I've been inconsistent in my approach here.
Thank you. Dorothy?
I totally support what Kathy said. Um, the comments about the parking around, um, Amity, on Amity Street has always been that we needed to have conversations with the banks. And I did not realize that the fact that they weren't taking place was because it had not come as a vote from the town council. Um, that is the better place. And, um, I agree with Evan, centralized parking is a good idea. But just as I want to preserve the beauty of the North Common um, and the centralized location in front of our, uh, town hall, I also believe in preserving the beauty of our local historic district. I still haven't gotten an answer as to where the starting point is of the 15 feet setback on the North Prospect Street side. And, um, I want to answer something about, uh, the existing parking lot. The residents who have been living across the street from the existing parking lot have not found it difficult. There was a problem years ago, it was dealt with. The parking garage would be a 24 hour structure with lights. It would be a very different experience from a not terribly, I mean, if you go take a look at our centralized parking lot right now at night, it's not very full. It is not keeping people up, but it's not waking people up with, with loud noises and bright lights. So, but the thing that's most interesting to me is the thing that Alyssa brought up. And, um, uh, where's Alyssa? Can't see her face right now. She may be off, but I, oh, there she is, how you are, okay. I don't know what we're going to do without you, Alyssa, because you bring up things that I have never heard that are really important. If indeed there is a covenant saying that no parking garage can be built on the side of the old academy, we need to know that. And I don't think it should just be brought up. I think somebody who has access to these records should find out and let us know. And if we find that out, then we can perhaps drop that spot as the future preser- uh, uh, approved parking spot. So I'm really hoping that people don't do a rush to judgment. Understand that the planning department did what they were asked to do. They didn't, they were not asked to go find the best place. So they didn't do it. They didn't look. They were asked to look at one spot, so they did. I think we need to look for the best place and I hope that we, I hope that we do that and don't just keep going down blind, narrow alleys. Thank you.
Chris and Nate have their hand up, Chris.
Two things, um, one is the 15 foot setback is from the property line. And chances are the property line is somewhere near the back of the sidewalk. It's not at the curb line. So if you look at the GIS maps and you see the, a red line that represents the property line, that's where the setbacks starts. And, you know, take into consideration that the GIS maps are more or less correct, but they're not absolutely correct. So in this case, the yellow line is showing you where the property line is. The other thing I wanted to say is if someone, if the town council or the town manager wants someone to look at the structural integrity of the Boltwood Garage and determine whether it could, um, handle another story, I think we're going to need to hire a structural engineer. So we would need to figure out how much money we need to hire a structural engine, engineer. We'd need to come up with a scope of work and then we could, we could do that. And so that would be an intention that would be, um, given to us by the town manager. Possibly the town council would ask them to do that. And so that would be a, a route in order to, um, get, get that answer if you want that answer. Thank you.
Nate, you have your hand up.
Sure, now I was going to just say what Chris said, uh, this map right here shows the property line. Um, in yellow, it's about 10 to 12 feet off the curb edge. And so 15 feet is almost approximately where, um, the end of, edge of the parking lot is. It may be a little closer to the street. So you have 10 to 12 feet and then you have 15 feet from the property line. So, um, you know, that's, you know, anywhere from, you know, 27, 25 to 30 feet off the curb edge, depending on uh, not distance. Um, and so, you know, what, what we did show was that, uh, 120 by 205, you know, 120 feet at the setback by 205 feet, um, could support a 270 space garage. So Greenfield built a garage in those dimensions and a 270 space garage, uh, could fit, um, given the proposed overlay. It could be more spaces, you know, depending on creativity of spots or, or, um, you know, maximizing a lot or building coverage. But, you know, the, the assumption was that a 270 space garage could fit, uh, given the overlay dimensions. And so, you know, um, you know, we also thought that this lot as a municipally owned lot was appropriate because it has been studied and could support a size of a garage. I just want to say to Alyssa's question about the, the spaces, in an RFP, you'd set minimum criteria. And so you, we could have, you know, a certain number of spaces. And if, if that can't be met, then a proposal could be rejected for not meeting the minimum. It's also based on, um, other criteria, comparative criteria and request for proposals. So we could reject proposals if, for instance, we ask for a concept site plan, um, certain design standards and space allocations and they don't meet those, they could be rejected um, at that instance too. And then as Chris mentioned through permitting, there's a way to also, um, review and, uh, and, you know, review, review a project. But in the request for proposals, we could set standards and conditions and then comparative criteria that would allow for the denial of proposals.
Thank you. Um, Andy, you had your hand up, but you took it down. Done. Are there any other questions from the council on this one? The next one is the amendment to Article 7, Parking and Access Regulations. Chris and Maureen, I just have to ask that we assume people have read this and make the presentation brief.
Maureen is in charge of the presentation, thank you.
Okay, let's go. Okay, hi, hi everyone. Uh, let me pull up this, my, uh, presentation. Um, can you see it?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to skip over the timeline. You can review this at your leisure. Um, so let's just get into it. So, uh, first I would like just to, um, review what is the existing parking space requirement under the zoning bylaw uh, for dwelling units, uh, so section 7.0000 um, requires a requires a minimum of two parking spaces for each dwelling unit are required. Uh, section seven point nine um under the existing uh zoning bylaw allows uh waivers and modifications of parking requirements is not complete because it focuses on properties that have multiple uses and not on single uses such as apartment buildings, single-family homes and duplexes. And so um the problem statements, if you will, is that the existing parking space requirements uh rely on conventional parking uh standards which provide uh minimum parking standards based on publications like the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE uh Parking Generation Handbook. The handbook's uh recommended ratios are uh generic and broad as they're applied to the whole nation and not for a specific community or region. Often, these standards do not account for factors relative to the site, the neighborhood or town wide s- uh scale. Um, additionally, these minimum ratios are often uh maximum ratios which account for the worst case scenario. A good example would be uh your uh shopping mall. You have massive amount of parking and uh it's trying to accommodate that worst case scenario such as, you know, holiday times. Uh, but for the majority of time, uh you you see, you know, th- those sorts of parking lots uh vacant. So one way to improve upon these conventional parking standards is to allow a permit granting authorities the ability to consider more flexible and efficient parking stand- standards based on uh principles of flexible parking uh standards. Um, and we'll get into that in in the proposal itself. And so uh focusing on parking requirements uh solely for residential uses, we uh um want to have a criteria for considering modification requests to the parking space requirements. Right now, they're confusing and incomplete for uh the permit granting authority as well as applicants. The parking space requirement uh modification requests for land uses that are allowed by right can only be done by special permit. So for instance, a single-family home or a accessory dwelling unit that's allowed by right, if they uh they are required a- as of right now uh to provide two parking spaces per dwelling. Um, and so uh that means if they, for accessory accessory dwelling unit, if they wanted, you know, one parking space instead of two, they would actually need to go through the zoning board of appeals special permit process for that waive, that modification or waiver request. The parking space requirements are listed at the beginning of Article seven under section seven point zero zero. This section for modification, uh the section for modification request is listed separately at the end of Article se- seven, which has been missed by potential applicants. The waiver modification requests are often seen as deterrents for for an applicant in our unpredictable, like a variance request for potential applicants. So our strategies for our um this zoning amendment proposal is to uh require two parking space, to continue to uh require two parking spaces per dwelling. And we would set that as the minimum and the maximum. And to incorporate flexible parking standards that are um would be at the discretion of the permit granting authority to uh to uh review alternative ratios. And so uh flexible parking standards, uh take account um unlike the conventional parking standards, as I mentioned before, are generic ratios adapted from a national publication, the IT, ITE Handbook. And so flexible parking standards, look at more site-specific uh locational um specifics. So you know, when considering alternative parking space ra- ratio on a project-by-project basis, you know, flexible parking standards account for specific geographic, demographic and or e- economic factors that affect that parking demand. So uh you know, geographic um factor could be, is it close to downtown? A democrat, dem- uh demographic factor could be, is that um residential use for senior housing? Or is it um an economic factor would be, is that housing development for low-income individuals? Those were, those would be um types of uh geographic, demographic and economic factors as examples. You know, flexible parking standards also get into parking management plans uh which address how parking will be managed and enforced by the applicant, which is a very key um aspect for the life of the project. And it also considers uh contingency-based measures that can be deployed in the future. So parking demands, you know, will change over time, land, as land uses change and as uh you know, the demographics of that land use changes. Perhaps if um in the amount of bedroom counts change, either, you know, there's more bedrooms or less or more tenants or less. You know, planners turn to um, you know, contingency b- base measures um as an effective tool to um deploy as um things arise in the in in the future. So that was covering bullet number two. Bullet number three provides specific require uh crit- uh criteria required for evaluate evaluating a proposed alternative ratio. So both the permit granting authority and applicant know what needs to be submitted and reviewed for the permit granting authorities uh determination. So that current zoning um section seven point nine one is not specific. It doesn't give you specific, uh you know, requirements of what needs to be uh provided by the applicant um and what needs to be reviewed by the permit granting authority. And so this proposal gets into that specific criteria. Number four, on a project-by-project basis, require applicant to submit contingency-based measures that can be deployed if needed in the future. Again, that's an example of flexible parking standards. And so a specific example of contingency-based measures would be shadow parking and uh trans- transportation demand management programs. And we'll get into that in in the in the exact uh proposed language. Number five, make the permit process less arduous for applicants requesting alternative parking ratios for by right uses. Example, accessory dwelling units. As I said previously, uh a by right use, like a single-family home or accessory dwelling unit that is by right, if they are seeking um you know, one parking space, instead of two parking spaces, they technically would need to go through the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Um, and the planning department uh believes that that is an arduous process. And so let's, let's make that less arduous for for by right uses. Number six, specify the parking space requirements, including alternative ratios ratio request for residential uses under the same section instead of later on in the by law, which currently requires additional waiver modification request. Again, as as I said in the previous slide, you know, the parking space requirement is under section seven point zero 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 zero. And the waiver modification request section is that the way at the end of this um this article under seven point nine one, it's often missed by applicants. And so we want to capture it all in in the same section instead of trying to guess that you need to flip to, you know, uh all the way to the end of the article. And number seven, require a parking management plan for all residential uses, regardless of whether they're asking for alternative ratio or if they're actually gonna not uh request a a alternative ratio. Uh, and that would outline how the applicant will manage and enforce the parking by by the applicant or developer. This is uh really important, especially for inspection services. If there's a change to the site and or intensity of the use that impacts the parking demand, such as another bedroom is added to the house in the future, it can be used as a as an effective tool for inspection services to require additional parking spaces as they determine what is the accurate nu- number of parking spaces based on that change. Let's see. Um, okay. And before I go to the zoning bylaw proposal itself, um, I just wanted to, at your leisure, these are some of the resources that I referred to um in my research of part of flexible parking standards. It's a industry term um that a lot of cities and towns across the nation that are um using metro uh area Planning Council, Council, which is a a regional planning agency for the Boston area, has a lot of um literature on this as well as um the Commonwealth Smart Parking Model Bylaw. And then there's um, there's textbooks on this. And another textbook that I refer to is my textbook on form-based code, which um all gets into flexible parking standards. Um, and there are a lot of communities in Western Mass that are applying these uh these uh concepts such as Northampton, Westfield, East Hampton and Greenfield. The list goes on. And if, again, if you go to um Metropolitan Area Planning Council, they list communities in the Boston area as well as the nation that are using um parking flexible parking requirements in their zoning bylaw or ordinance. Okay, so now let's, let's jump to let's jump to the um proposal itself. So this is
Maureen, just assume that we've also looked at this, okay?
Oh, okay, sure. Okay. Um, so this is um as voted by the GOL on Oc- October seventeen twenty twenty-one. Um, and so the changes, uh the proposed changes are in bold italics. And so I'll just start uh with here at the very s- uh start under seven point zero zero. We do add in the the um, the municipal parking um district would be excluded from from this proposed language, not that we're, you you know, making this new um suggestion about the parking municipal parking district. It said it that uh the parking municipal district already exists. Uh, you don't need to provide parking. And therefore, uh we just wanted to add it, add this verbiage here as a reminder for applicants in the permit granting authority that that the municipal parking district would not be applicable. Okay.
Yes.
I I'm so sorry to interrupt someone midstream. I know how frustrating that is. I'm, I'm struggling a little with the fact that the thing that's up on the screen is identified as something that was voted by GOL and it talks about highlighting and and bolding. But the statement that's also in our packet that's from KP Law includes something dated the exact same date that has a different set of highlighting and bolding. And I don't underst- I want to know what the difference is between the two, because I don't know why we're looking at one of, there are two different documents dated the exact same date with different bolding and highlighting on them. And maybe staff could just take a minute to see what the difference is, or maybe they're planning to run us through a whole separate version of this. I'm just really confused because the one that's identified as GOL voted doesn't say anything about GOL on it. The document is just linked with that title. And the KP Law document, which I'm sure GOL actually looked at as a different attachment dated the same date of November sixteenth, but with more explanations about green and yellow highlights and bolding.
Maureen, Joe, you have your hand up for an explanation.
Yes. So all of those different highlights were to show the various iterations of this at of the bylaw amendments, proposed amendments, as they went through the various meetings at Planning Board and CRC, which means it got a little hard to see what exactly was staying, what exactly was new from what is in the bylaw right now and what is old. So all those highlights were just, oh, between last meeting and this meeting, here's what else changed. And so all of that got removed so that GOL and this council could look at exactly what the current bylaw is, which is not in bold, and what is actually being proposed to be removed or not removed. The language, I believe, other than one potential change that George could probably say, I think GOL might have changed one word. I'm not sure. Um, I can look that up. Is exactly the same. It just gets rid of all of that highlighting.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Maureen, please.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mandy. Um, inland. Okay, so um, we'll, we'll keep with uh the GOL copy because the other copy has too many colors and it it's visually distracting. So um and so, so under seven point um zero 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 for for dwellings, including apartments, we again are keeping the requirement for two parking spaces for each dwelling unit. And we add shall be provided unless the permit granting authority determines that an alternative ratio ensuring adequate parking for the proposed use will be provided. The permit granting authority shall determine the adequate number of off-street parking spaces based on crit- criteria such as
Maureen, you don't need to read it all to us. Thank you.
Okay, sure. And so these are examples of of demographic, locational and ec- and ec- and economic factors that the permit granting authority could base their criteria for uh reviewing um alternative uh ratio for parking spaces. And so the next paragraph gets into uh contingency uh based uh measures that the permit granting authority could uh require for for a project. Uh, and so for this, it's uh known as um shadow parking. I've also heard of it as uh landscape parking reserves. And so um it is uh say, um, so in essence, I'll give you example is, you know, a developer says, you know, instead of those two parking spaces per unit, we want to have one parking space uh per unit. And uh the permit granting authorities could, you know, based on looking at all these uh factors and all the and all the conversations about the uh the different criteria that that they're, that they're gonna base their uh decision on, the permit granting authority could say, you know what? That's fine. We'll, we'll approve your alternative parking ratio. However, just as a uh safe-to-field uh measure, we're gonna re- require a shadow parking in case in the future uh we 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 do indeed uh feel that the parking demand warrants the construction of of parking. And so uh the parking, uh the the shadow parking or landscape parking reserve would be would be maintained as uh open space. It could be lawn, it could be um ground cover. And it would be shown on the approved se- site plan by the permit granting authority of where where that shadow parking location would would be located. And in the event, in the future, the per- permit granting authority says, oh, the parking demand has changed. Uh, we, we do actually indeed need these parking spaces built of that applicant would be required to provide that i- at a future date. And then now this next paragraph gets into another contingency-based uh measure offered by uh flexible parking standards. This gets into um requiring the applicant to submit a transportation demand management plan for re- an approval. Um, and then the plan is to include implementation measures by the applicant to to reduce parking uh demands and vehicle trips of tenants and visitors associated with that development. And that can get into car and van pooling, offering subsidies for transit, providing bike racks, uh providing shuttle service to and from um off-site parking facilities. Um, and then uh the applicant could uh provide periodic documentation of how, you know, these measures are reducing the vehicle trips and parking demand. Um, and and the permit granting authority could, you know, review that, you know, every, you know, periodically, every once a year, every five years, what whatever would make sense to the permit granting authority. And then um this next paragraph here gets into the permit granting authority shall um require the applicant to submit a parking management plan and that for review and approval. And that would get into how the parking will be managed and enforced by the applicant. Um, and again, this would be very helpful for inspection services um to deal with potential enforcement issues. It would show the parking plan of how many parking spaces are on the property. Are there, you know, it, the, there would be a written narrative indicating, are there parking decals or parking stickers or signage? Perhaps uh, you know, how would they deal with towing if if that was something that um was sort of a concern? And and it it could, you know, um, it could be, uh, I would imagine for accessory dwelling unit, the parking management plan would be very simple. Maybe it's just a parking plan, which is a requirement of the rental permit registration um already. And as the intensity of the use increases, perhaps the parking management plan would be become more robust, such as like an apartment building or a mixed-use building. And then um this is And then, um, this is, although this doesn't need to say it here, but we felt that we want to just. Emphasize this is that, you know, the amount of parking spaces provided for each dwelling unit shall satisfy the provisions of section ten point three eight. And then eleven point two four as applicable, that's just as a reminder for the Permit Granting Authority, as well as the applicant. Um, so they can reference that, and then under section seven point nine waivers, um, we, um. We are, um. Are proposing that um, we would remove the mention of seven point zero as. Um, as that is for the residential uses that we are um, applying our proposal to. And so, uh, for uses that are not residential uses, uh, they would still be able to make their waiver request under seven point nine one. At least for now, and I think, I believe the planning department would, would like to explore other uh, uses. Um, but not at this time, as that would take, um, you know, a substantial amount of time to, to, um, to analyze. Um, as there are cer- certain uses that like, such as like churches and gyms that have parking requirements. That are ki- kind of wonky of like figuring that out, and so this would not be an appropriate time to get into. All the, the nitty-gritty um, of, of facts, um, that would require that review. And so that concludes uh, my presentation, and I'm, oh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, I'm going to suggest the following, we're gonna go ahead with the reports for the three different groups. And have brief questions, but on the agenda next week. This particular bylaw will be toward the beginning of the bylaw discussions. May not be the very first one, but it'll be toward the beginning, so the people feel a little fresher than they do now. Um, so.
Does, Lynn, can I just ask, does that mean we'll still be in first reading mode next week, cuz that? Cuz I'd like to just postpone this, cuz I have a whole lot of questions, and I'm not sure I understand this. I'm not feeling like I've had a first reading, so I'd rather.
Let's do the report and then ha- ask a few questions, and then we can decide. After next week, whether we need to have that just be a first reading and not act on it until the thirteenth, okay? Um. Uh, Planning Board Report.
The Planning Board um, held their public hearing, excuse me, on July twenty-first with the C R C. They also talked about this on September fourteenth, and they finally made their recommendation on November third. Um, and the Planning Board voted four to one to zero with two members absent. To recommend the Town Council adopt this zoning amendment.
Thank you, G O L, I'm sorry, C R C.
This was referred to C R C and the Planning Board on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, five months ago. We made an initial recommendation on August, uh, the first joint public hearing, as Chris said, was July twenty-first, that's when it was closed. We need, made an initial recommendation on August twenty-fourth. We had a further public hearing due to the ninety-day requirement on November ninth, twenty twenty-one, and we voted to recommend. The council adopt this amendment on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, that vote was four in favor, one opposed. I want to say two things related to this, the first one is that, um, when C R, when the. Council unanimously recommend, unanimously voted to revise the. A D U bylaws to allow them by right without requiring Planning Board or Zoning Board hearings in nearly all instances. C R C reported at that time that it intended that because a parking issue was removed from that bylaw. That the revisions to this bylaw were an integral part of that, that revision. Um, and so, this is a continuation and sort of the. Uh, the C R C members see this as part of. A necessary part of fully implementing the A D U revisions that this council unanimously adopted. Um, and second of all, I just wanna clarify that, um, this proposal doesn't have any effect on the Municipal Parking District, as was said. In other words, that means whether or not this proposal or these revisions are adopted, parking will still not be required. To be provided in new buildings in the downtown municipal parking district. That is a different bylaw, if people want that part to change, that is not what we do here in this proposal. That is the municipal parking district, so if you don't like what's going on in municipal parking district, this has nothing to do with that. I, I just wanted to make that clear, that this is parking in all other sections of town, but not the municipal parking district. Um, and so again, the recommendation was four to one in favor of adopting this, these revisions.
Thank you, Mandy Jo, and thanks for that very important clarification of both. With regard to its uh, being compatible with A D U, and are, are part of A D U, and also not. Applicable to downtown, G O L, George.
G O L met on November seventeenth, the vote was three to nothing with two absent declared, declared consistent actionable, and the K P Law review is in your packet.
Okay, are there any questions that people would like to raise at this time? Dorothy.
I could see supporting this if shadow parking were included at the front. For anything less than two spaces per unit, I've attended many, many meetings and have seen how easily developers uh, get rid of. Uh, two units per unit, two parking spaces per unit, and get approval from the Planning Board. The last time, somebody said he didn't need that much parking, um, and then the historic building, which was supposed to be preserved on the lot. Was dis- discovered all of a sudden to be in too much need of structural help, it was demolished, and he's using it for more parking, so. Um, I do like the idea of shadow parking, I think it's a great idea, but. Have it there from the beginning, if time to, it, if it turns out, then in fact, they don't need uh, that shadow parking. Then you can use it for a green or some public space, but otherwise, we're just going down the trail again. Of finding ways to get rid of parking, so then we need even a second or third parking garage.
Are there, are there other comments or questions at this time? People just wanna reserve them for January, for December sixth. Okay, when I assume we will have a number of comments, and we may at that point decide. That we will not vote on this until the thirteenth, okay? Um, are there any other, um, and there's no appointments, are there liaison reports that people have at this time? Re- recognizing that this last week didn't have a lot of committee meetings going on, uh, Mandy Jo, C R C.
I'm just gonna continue announcing this at every meeting, which is the hearing. The C R C hearing on the proposed solar moratorium will be January tenth at seven P M, which is a Monday night. So, that's an announcement for this council, for new counselors that might be coming in for the public, I'm just gonna keep announcing it.
Thank you. Um, Evan, um, I'm, do you have your hand raised for your committee?
I'm sorry, my computer just cut out, I have no idea what you just said.
Do you have your hand raised to talk about T S O?
Yes, I do, um, just, just very briefly, I just wanted to mention, um, that T S O, this Thursday. At five thirty P M, will be holding um, the required public hearing for the North Pleasant Street upgrades. Along Kendrick Park between Triangle Street and Halleck Street, that will include um, shifting the road to one-way. And creating several parking spaces, uh, but one of the reasons I wanna call this out is that we will be piloting the new public participation tools. That uh, counselors Hanke and Ball Millen have been collaborating with U Mass on. Um, I believe the town posted a news alert that went out today about that. Um, and so this will be both an opportunity for the public to participate in the normal public hearing that we normally do. But also to test out some of this new technology for public participation, and so it should be a really interesting thing. So please encourage people to come, so that there are people to test out these new tools um, at this, at this first meeting.
Hmm, we wanna thank Evan for agreeing to do that, uh, Kathy, elementary school building, anything?
Um, I, I announced last week, but on December second, uh, Denisco, the designer, will be visiting with. The school building committee, and on December fourteenth, at the school committee normal time. We're going to do a joint meeting with the building committee and the school committee, where they will be coming in with a more detailed. What are the key milestones, big decisions, and it will be one of the first, I would call it public forums, you know. Uh, this is starting going, and we decided to do it with the school committee after the building committee meets.
Just wanna mention that Chris and Rob, thank you so much, I'm sorry that I didn't say this before. The rest of the staff decided it was time to turn in for the night. Uh, but you have done an amazing job that no words can even uh, express how much. We know you've worked and how hard you all have worked, but thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Steve, you have your hand up.
I was just gonna ask, is there a signed contract now with Denisco?
Um, it's Paul still on, we're, we're, Paul, would you call it, we're on the verge?
Well, the answer is no, we do not have a signed.
We don't have one, yeah, we do, we don't have one, Steve, but, but, but it's, the elements are there. It's just not all the elements, one, a couple of elements are missing.
Okay, um, finance committee.
Nothing that I need to say tonight, I'll uh, have a ri- report for the next meeting.
Okay, George, G O L.
You got an email me for, email for me earlier today, and I promised I would remind you tonight, and it's still tonight, so I'm gonna keep my promise. Um, G O L meets on Wednesday, ten thirty, if you wish to make any contributions, suggestions, ideas to the town manager performance goals for twenty twenty-two. Please send them to me, um, preferably before ten thirty, and we will incorporate them as best we can into the second draft.
Thank you, um, any liaison reports? I'm sorry, you had your hand up, Alyssa. Questions?
Pulled it down, cuz it's a question for you, it's not a liaison.
All right. Um, no town, no um, minutes, and Paul, Town Manager's report. We have one for a week ago, and I think there was not one for this one.
That's correct.
Okay, are there any questions of the town manager? Seen none, Town Council comments, I sent you a reminder that I'm looking for comments regarding. Your individual comments, do not reply all, uh, with regard to the Town Manager Performance Memo. Are there other questions? Alyssa.
Yeah, I know it was many hours ago, but you had indicated that potentially the planning board was going to be. Uh, the planning staff was going to be soliciting additional information from planning board members and seeing if they were going to be revising their planning board reports. So, obviously, if that actually does happen, which would be really weird, but if it does, um, we'll be getting those in time for next week. But my, my point about that is only if they were already intending to. And then for every future report, we should never be getting planning board reports or any multiple member body reports. That don't list the names of the membership on the report, that's just a bizarre oversight that should not happen again.
Thank you, okay, any other comments? Kathy?
Yeah, I, I just have one, um, I've made this to you uh, directly, Lynn. I'm looking at the agendas for the next several meetings, I vaguely remember that we agreed to end meetings by ten o'clock at night, and we never do. No, and, and I just think, I just think what we're doing to ourselves, and what we're doing to staff. Um, is uh, uh, is wearing us out, and I was asked by one of the new counselors that's coming on. Sh- should they expect a November and December like they're looking at our November and December, and.
I certainly hope, never.
And I tried to say, oh no, highly unusual, but, but I, but I, I just.
Never again, because.
But I would just like to say never again, and I just, I, you know, I, I don't use motions very much. But I saw we can make a motion to adjourn and force a vote on that, and I'd like to think that we could actually try really hard to, to meet it. End at ten, and if we have to continue a discussion to the next time, we should do that, because I'm looking around at some faces and. People get tired, um, and, and I don't think that is good for deliberation. So I, I, it's just a plea to, to keep control of the end time of the meetings. Even if it means we have to push something off an agenda onto the next time, cuz we're not.
Okay, Kathy, I have to turn it back on you and say, keep control of your time, everybody else.
I, I absolutely agree, but, but I just have to tell you, if we have six meeting things on an agenda that need to be discussed. We have to have time, that's, that's, it, that is control.
Dorothy.
I think that we should make a motion, not tonight, that unless there is an emergency, which there was not. That we would not destroy a holiday season again, because remember, we're supposed to be encouraging people to become members of the town council. To go through the trouble of getting elected, and then to come to the meetings, and I think this has been, uh, it ruined my holiday. And I know that I'm not the only one, and I know that Chris Brestrop has been working through every single moment, so I, I'm very upset about it. I've kept control of myself, but my son left a day early because he said, I'm not gonna sit through another time when you barricade yourself all for six hours. To be at a meeting, there was no need for this, there was no need for it, and I think that we have to assure the new incoming members. That we're not gonna do this again, and to make some kind of motion, but I'm not gonna propose anything tonight, thank you.
Pat?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm sorry to take time right now, I've been very quiet this evening, I thought it was an excellent discussion on all. And in many, many ways, uh, Kathy, and you do need to take care of personal time. You're talking about um, limiting co- meetings, and yet you won't limit yourself. And, and you know, the, and I, I am not trying to pick on you specifically, um. I'm sort of tired of people saying, we don't need to do this, we don't have to do this. We can end at ten o'clock, that's not true, you know, it's very possible that we need to meet every week, I would hate to do that. I don't like staying up late, but I have been listening, and I have been thinking, and I've been concerned. And I'm concerned about the kind of attitude that some counselors have shown. Um, to other counselors, it's a hell of a loss that we're losing six people, two of them were not reelected. The others are leaving, that's a major loss. And I'm really tired of beating up George and Evan, who I don't always d- agree with. But they don't deserve the kind of things that some of the counselors have said and done, or that some of the community has done, done, doing. We need to respect each other, and that starts with respecting ourselves and limiting what we have to say. To what's important, and not re- it, not saying the same thing six times, because you wanna make your point. I'm sorry, but I needed to say that.
Are there any other comments? Then, I'm declaring the meeting adjourned at eleven thirty-nine.